Yeah, we're on the air now.
So much fun.
Yeah, we're doing it with them.
Hello and good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the special city council meeting of October 26, 2020. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the five United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you want to start off going through, or do you want me to take a lead?
Maybe the process, as we mentioned, maybe you just talked about the process, and then I'll move the meeting along.
Okay, so what we're going to do here today, and the sole purpose of tonight's special meeting, is to start a review process on our city charter. To remind everybody here and anybody at home, this review process is something that the council selected to do. We have to obviously be careful to not make any substantial change to the charter. So what we're going to do is, we're going to, throughout this process, we're going to consult legal to make sure that we're in the realm and the scope of our work. So if there is a proposed change to the charter, it will be proposed, and just that, until legal can go through and come back with an actual opinion on that. And it may be, it may not be. And then, obviously, at the end of all of this, I want to just say this several times, everything needs to be voted on by the public during the next scheduled election. So what we're going to be doing tonight, and the city manager is going to be leading off, going through, really, the entire charter, take a small break, about hour, hour and a half in, we try to be, I think, mentally done by about 7:30, that's going to be a good chunk of this. We have subsequent city council meetings where we can keep going through the charter that we didn't hit, we're going to go through it again, and then again, and again, until we feel that it's the right document with the right changes that we can vote on. Throughout tonight, as we go through, sequentially in order from section one on, if there is any changes that you would like to see made into the charter, additions or changes, we'll go through the motion process. You'll make a motion to, for example, to change the official, I'd make a motion on section 1.3, to change the official color of the city of Auburn to purple. I think no one can argue with that one, as an example, right? I'd ask for that motion, someone would have to make the motion, someone would have to second the motion, and then we'd vote on the motion. This only moves the suggested change up to legal review. That's all it's doing, it's not a final approval, it just moves it along the process, because we have a finite amount of legal resources, that we don't want to expend upon every individual's thoughts and comments that should be considered. Let's see if we have consensus in the beginning, before we expend that resource on that review. It will then, obviously, all have to come back to us, and that slate of proposed changes post-legal review, to be voted on in their entirety, before this can be moved along to public comment, and then eventual public vote. Is there any questions on the process? Okay, so, any vote, just to summarize, any vote made today, any motion made, and any subsequent vote, is not binding, it just moves us on to legal review, including on the final slate of recommendations. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, just a question. You mentioned that it's voted on in the next election, which, what election are you referring to?
Really, ideally, it would be the spring elections, so that these changes could take effect in November, but we have to do this according to standard, and not to time, so where that might be a desire, and we all talked about this before, kind of a desired timeframe, if we're not there, we're not there. Okay? Okay. Very good, I'm going to turn this over, no other questions? I'm going to turn this over to the city manager, who's going to go, step by, labor a step.
Yes, so, thank you, Mayor, Council. So we will begin, we'll go through each article, hopefully you've had a chance to review the charter, and made some notes, that would be the time for discussion at some point, as we're discussing each article, or a section, if you want to amend that section, then just make that motion. Even though our clerk's not here, she will provide minutes for the public, that you will adopt at our next, not this most recent council meeting coming up, it'll be November 16th, so there will be minutes that'll be available for the public as well. So we'll start right in, Article 1 is grants of powers. I'm not going to go through each section, I would just say if there's a section in, maybe I will go through each one, be easier, section 1.1, that's our corporate existence. Wait and pause, hearing none, we'll go to 1.2, which is the construction of a city powers under the charter.
Hey guys, anytime, if you have any questions on the definition of these sections, folks, this is a great time to ask, okay?
In your next scheduled meeting, we will ask Attorney Malloy to be here, so anything that you come up with today, that we need some legal advice on, he'll be at that meeting, we thought it would be best to cover all of it at the same time.
And if I could, also, if we go through section 2, 3, and so forth, it's not a closed book, we can always go back onto those sections, even though we covered them, after some thought process, and add, and have a motion, and add something to the slate of potential changes.
Last, that's fine, the last one would be 1.3, which is intergovernmental relations. Anything else in this article, before we move to Article 2?
Yes, Mr. Manager, I do. I actually would like to propose a motion. This would be Charter Section 1.4, it doesn't exist, it's an addition to the charter, naming. I'll read it, I'd like to see a motion, motion made on the floor, to add into the charter, Section 1.4, under naming, which is, "The only allowable names of the city are Auburn and the City of Auburn. As of adoption, there will be no official use of a moniker, though from time to time, a moniker may be approved by the city council for use in advertising or marketing initiatives. As of adoption, the only approved slogan for the City of Auburn is 'No Steps Backwards' in either Latin or English, though from time to time, a slogan may be approved by the city council for use in advertising or marketing initiatives." Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Counselor Gary.
Can I make a correction, though, in your language?
I'm sorry, yes, please.
No, steps backward.
Backward? And I should have probably said it in Latin, but my Latin's rusty. Vestigia nulla restaurum.
Restorum.
Thank you, my Latin is rusty. So, yes, so that's a point of order correction, not plural. I have a second for Counselor Carrier. Is there any discussion, would you like me to explain why I thought of it?
Yeah, can you explain that?
Yeah, during the research, when we're, we've been talking a lot about communications and brand, identity, I think it's really important that we first define what we are, it may seem trivial, but we are the City of Auburn, or Auburn, Maine, and by adopting this, we kind of started a clean slate with regards to branding, naming, what are we, and what do we want to be? It also allows for consistency within city departments, and potentially eventually outside organizations, to make sure there's conformity in how they reference Auburn, because it does influence our brand and our identity. And it's been challenging the last three years, going, you know, what are we? Are we in the City of Opportunity, are we the City of Urban Recreation, City of Neighborhoods, you know, come to Auburn, we are what? Now, I don't have the answer, nor do we need to come up with the answer, but at least this allows us to start thinking of that, and making the field less cluttered. And for time to time, we might want to be, in our bicentennial, have a new moniker or a new slogan, that would come to then city council for approval, so consistency would take effect here.
So, thank you for that. So, this is to prevent somebody from just saying, "I'm going to have a campaign and call it the Shoe City." I mean, what's, is, what's the purpose of it?
Yes, absolutely. It's, let's say, a department or a committee wanted to change, you know, our slogan and do a marketing campaign utilizing the City of Auburn, saying it's the Shoe City. It wouldn't be authorized, unless the council approved.
Will this hamstring our marketing capacity, particularly within the city administration?
Well, I don't, I don't think so, I think what it would require is for the council to make the approval. You know, we have a non-official logo that's used often, that I know some people will ask, "Where did that come from, why are we using it?" Well, if that, this was in place, you as a council would have had voted on that, to make sure that that's a logo that could be used. So I see value in that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No? We have a motion on the floor, and a second. All those in favor of adding this to the slate of proposed changes? Passed unanimously.
Okay. So seeing nothing else on Article 1, we'll move on to Article 2, this is as a reference to city council, and the powers, first section is section 2.1, powers and duties. Hearing nothing, we'll move to 2.2, the compensation, composition and compensation of the city council. Starting with, how many will be comprised of our city council?
I will say, I don't think we can probably change the number of people, but again, it's worth, I mean, if someone wants to make that motion, it's definitely will be looked at, I think it would be a stretch to change the composition of the city council, i.e. numbers.
Would this be where we talk about having a different term?
So there's another section that references that, although it would then come back to this reference, because it does speak to a two-year term. So if you're talking about staggered terms, which we've talked about in the past, that would be another section, if you want to extend terms, it would be here in this section, to a three-year term, or...
So, we should probably manage that, the next, where we see this next, before coming back here, and then we'd make the change into three-year?
I would recommend that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then the last section on here, as it pertains to compensation.
I'd like to make a motion, that compensation for all elected municipal officials be indexed for cost of living on an annual basis, which would include, in this case, for this section, all city councilors and the mayor, would be indexed for a CPIU. In other words, it would go up with inflation annually.
So, Mr. Mayor, just as a point of reference, you can make a recommendation, but you can't make that motion.
I'm sorry, make a recommendation, that motion be made. Thank you very much. I got all ahead of myself.
It's all right.
Thank you. I think we need to discuss this, because I know this came before the council, not based on the cost of living, but just in terms of increasing counselor reimbursement, and people pushed back against that, I want to make sure that if there is a problem, that we really vet this.
So we don't have a motion on the floor, which is great, so yeah, let's talk about that, then, and we can talk about that. There was, there was, Andy Titus, in the last council, brought this forward, I was actually out of the country then, brought a proposal to increase city council, and maybe school board, I can't remember specifically.
I think it was just city council, and it was not for a specific amount.
Just to talk about it?
Yeah.
It didn't, didn't go anywhere?
No.
Didn't go anywhere. I believe the last time salaries were adjusted, Counselor Walker, do you remember, I thought it was 2005, 2006?
2006.
It's been a long time.
It's been a long time. Extremely unpopular conversation to have, because, you know, you don't want to get, you know, it's all about, is this a full-time or not full-time, there's budget impacts, you know, I think it needs to be looked at holistically, I think the school board specifically, and we can cover that later on, but it's all holistic, they get paid, I think it's like $25 a meeting, and the amount of work they do, forget COVID, it's just unbelievably large. The chair gets paid a little bit more, I think $35 a meeting. The councilors, y'all get paid for what you're asked to do, for the secondary or subcommittees or committee assignments, and the amount of meetings and times, some of you all can do it, fine, a lot of you have, and, not just you, I'm saying, future councilors, and who do we want to attract to serve, really should think about having increased compensation, because time is extremely valuable, and you can give a lot of it, but, you know, I'm one to say that you, some people should be compensated for going above and beyond.
Can we get some clarification on how our pay is calculated? It's not hourly, because it doesn't, the amount of time that we put in monthly fluctuates, so how is our pay determined currently?
You have a set annual amount, that's then divided out based on your pay period.
Your proposal would just be that that set annual amount, as it stands today, is indexed, so for increase of cost of living annually?
Again, and that was just really to start the conversation, there might be a better solution, I think that the foundation of it is, the amount of work that you're doing, and that's being asked of you to do, and it seems it keeps increasing annually, is deserving of something that's more modern in its approach.
What's a standard for other municipalities?
It varies.
We're less.
We are, overall, I believe we are, most municipalities pay a lot of, i.e. planning board, planning board of appeals, play the school committee more, I mean, you can't really use Portland as an example, because they have a full-time mayor at $65,000, indexed annually. Westbrook is $7,000, $8,000.
When Andy and I looked at it, we were, for a city council, with the same, structured the same way we are, we had lower, our annual re, not reimbursement, but was lower, on average.
Is there, is there a reason why we do that in the charter versus an ordinance later on to address it?
It's set in the charter, actually.
Okay.
And it's, it is, a little bit further on, under compensation.
Not the amount, but that it just has to be...
The amounts are in page 25.
Yeah, it's in here. So, I mean, a lot of this charter, for one section, is referencing something that's written out in another section, but it's there.
Then Article 10, Section 10.1, bullet B, the end of that paragraph.
Page 25?
Yep.
Yes.
Halfway down.
Section 10.1?
Yeah, I'm online, so I don't have the page numbers.
Oh, yep. So the mayor is compensated $4,000, council $1,800, school committee member $600.
Is there a reason why the school committee is paid significantly less than the council? Does anybody know? Were, was there, do you know if there was a reason?
They meet just as often, right? I mean, they do...
Two meetings a month. And they have subcommittee, they don't have as many subcommittees as the council has.
I was going to say, the subcommittee structure is different.
They do have, they do have subcommittees, but they're not, whether, let's say, interlocal, like MWAQ with Counselor Walker, I mean, they don't have that type of subcommittee structure, but they do have subcommittees.
I have, I sit on the finance and policy committees under the school board, there's also curriculum, supplies, and things like that, parent, teacher, we have a new DIY, or whatever they're calling it, equity, inclusion, and then, so there's, there are, I think it's 12 subcommittees.
So, is there, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
I was going to say, so this was decided in 2005?
Right.
Approximately five or six, whenever it says on the front.
Correct.
Is there a reason not to also peg the, the school committee payment the same as the city council? I mean, I know we talked a little bit about that the, the subcommittee structure is different, and maybe a little less onerous for the school committee, you can speak to that, Counselor Carrier.
The, and not having been here in 2005, I would say that the reason they do that is because the school committee comes under the city council. The school committee is a, is a division of the city, we decide what goes on in the school committee, so I would think that they were thinking, well, city council is here, school subcommittee is down here, so, I don't know why they chose the amounts they did, but...
It's not based on the amount of work?
I, I think they chose it because he's not elected to the school committee, he goes there under the mayor, so that the money's a whole different thing.
Okay.
He's elected to be a counselor, but not, not the school committee.
Maybe you do get paid for both?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's a secondary job, but I think what your question was, why is the school committee not paid a member, not paid as much as a city counselor?
So as the mayor mentioned, we'll have a sec, I'm sorry, we'll have a second meeting, so if you're not prepared to make any motions on something tonight, that's okay, you can take this time, or task staff to do some research on something, we can do that as well. Counselor Gary, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and Mr. Mayor. Historically, I think the compensation is just, well, what they call a stiphine, an allotment of money for us to use, to help us with our constituent work, to help pay for gas, help us to go to meetings and suppers, or do things for our constituents within our community. And that's why it's looking, it's not a salary, it's just an amount of money to help us do what we need to do. And I don't feel comfortable, because when I ran, I didn't run for the money, I ran for the fact that I wanted to do what was good for the City of Auburn and my constituents.
You know, I don't think anybody's running, or in service, or has for money, period, nor will they, I mean, it's not, there's a, you can get a second job at Irving, or some other place, and make more money than you are working as a counselor, so it is a love, but I think it's, it does, you know, it could, again, we can talk about it later, but everybody should probably think about it, you know, it does show that we understand your time is valuable, extremely valuable, and your time with your family is, and that we're trying to offset that just enough to, you know, help you and show that appreciation, but...
A cost of living increase, and it's not exact, because it's, it's compounding, but at 2% from the, would be about 540, that's not compounding, it's not exact, but it's, if you do 2% times 15...
Oh, 15 years, so since... Oh, 15 years, so since this was put into place.
Since this was put in, would be about $540, and for the mayor would be $1,200. If we adjusted, but it's, it's actually going to be a little bit more because it's compounds, but that's at 2%.
Average.
Just as a point of reference.
Okay, well, I think it's something to work on or think about. We can always come back after it if we want.
Harry, that in today's environment isn't the time to raise our pay.
I would just note the last paragraph too, where it is, "The council shall be reimbursed for their actual and necessary expenses incurred." So just so for the public listening, yes, that's a stipend that's awarded. However, if there are other expenses that the council, that's why you have that, you have a budget, and those monies are reimbursed out of that funding.
Okay, so yeah, let's just, we'll move on. Again, this is all good. I don't think there's anything negative that can happen from conversation about these pros or cons. That's why you have the motion process for the slate.
Section 2.3, vacancies forfeiture of office. Has anything there? We'll move on to 2.4, your meetings, when they're set. You meet regularly twice a month, twice each month?
There is something, we've been talking about meetings, specifically with Monday holidays, and how do we address Monday holidays? Do we move our meeting to the following Tuesday or to the next week, so it's an off-week Monday? That happens several times a year. We've had to address this and we have on certain occasions through motion and order, moving our meeting, that was, I think it was Labor Day might have been the last one?
We'll, we'll address that when we review ordinance.
Is that an ordinance, but versus?
The charter just says it's twice a month. It doesn't set your actual meetings.
Very good then.
It's good, so, yeah. But it's something we need to address. The question that I would have as, as manager for this one would be, and there are some communities that are addressing this as a result of what we've gone through with COVID, is would you like to have language in here that states that in the event of a emergency or a declaration of an emergency, meetings can be held remotely to authorize business? So you're not waiting for whether or not a authorization from the state comes down. Under home rule, some communities are making those adjustments within their, their local charters.
I think that's a really good idea to consider because we've seen what happens and who knows what'll happen next. And now everybody's used to remote meetings. It would be easy if you needed to do something in a snowstorm or something like that.
But declared emerg, snowstorm wouldn't be a declared emergency.
Okay.
That was, just the point of reference on the...
Declared emergency by the mayor or by the state?
By the mayor, under home rule.
Okay.
So, because some, again, the state could do it, and then they could have some legislation, which currently doesn't exist, saying that when a governor does it, then you can automatically do it. But in lieu of that, if it's a city, if the mayor or the city manager declares a city emergency, then it can be automatic. We don't have to wait for the state to come back, you know, and grant these powers. So it's, you're writing an out clause, if you would, for local rule within our local charter under declared cities of emergency by the mayor or the city manager.
In the, in the phrase that you're using right now, Mr. Mayor, saying the mayor or the city manager, should it be the mayor and the city manager?
So it's already written under ordinance, so you'll review that when you look at ordinance.
Okay.
This would just be that in the event of a declaration of a citywide emergency, the council has the authority to hold for, remote or virtual, however language we want to come up with.
Okay.
So the language would be, again, just in, in event of a declared city emergency?
Meetings can be held remotely.
That's correct.
That's a great idea because back when we had the ice storm, remember the problems we had between us and the civil defense or whatever they called themselves and the state? We were actually all battling, and at that time, the manager said, screw everybody, we're doing it. And we went out and did everything ahead of everybody.
So if there is a motion to be made by someone, I recommend that read, "In the event of a declaration or of a declared citywide emergency, meetings can be held remotely."
Do we need it to have it be citywide compared to just city? I know it's semantics, but Ward 2 could be walled off from a flood, and I can't make it. You know, half the city could...
I think city, I think city. I mean, we call it citywide, but city emergency.
Okay.
So I make a motion, and Mr. Mayor, can you read that again?
"In the event of a declared city emergency, meetings can be held, city council meetings can be held remotely."
Second.
A motion by Councilor Azania, second by Councilor Walker. This would be in Section 2.4. Any debate? Any conversation?
I would just say, through the legal process, it may need to reference who is going to authorize that, but we'll allow the attorney to take a look at it and make that recommendation.
Deconflicting through other parts of the ordinance. Okay. All those in favor? Approves unanimously. Again, add it to the slate. I've recommended changes.
All right, 2.5, which is quorum. 2.6, which is process.
Can I ask a question about 2.5?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure.
How can we compel someone to be in attendance?
Yeah, you can.
I'm just curious of the logistics of that.
There's some real-world examples.
Is there a rule about lack of attendance?
It just states that, "But a smaller number may adjourn or compel attendance of an absent member." It just means that it's gonna, it's just saying it's gonna compel that, not necessarily the individual, but any action you take might compel it. But not actually compelling the actual person to come in.
But we have before. We've actually invoked that. I believe in the flood '86, we sent police cruisers or some... I remember this historically. We sent PD to go pick up councilors and bring, compel them to come into city council chambers. I don't think it was because they didn't want to come. I think it was primarily because I couldn't. But, you know, we can compel councilors to be in attendance.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Emergency, they can do a remote.
I was gonna say, again, just to keep in mind that that's physical attendance, whereas if we can actually go through with the virtual.
If there's a declared emergency.
I still think it's, and we can, we can have legal take a look at that, but I still think it has to do with the, the action. The transaction of business might compel the attendance of absent members. So you might not be able to do the business you want to do because now you have to compel a meeting with those absent members to be present. I don't think it's actually saying, we're gonna go pick up Councilor Boss and force her to come in.
I'll test it out, see what happens.
All right, 2.6, process. This is as it pertains to executive sessions. And Bullet A, record. With the exception of, yeah, I'm sorry, with the exception of executive sessions. Qualifications. Action, how we pass orders. Bullet D on voting. All right, seeing nothing on 2.6, we'll move to 2.7, standard codes. This is as it pertains to writing ordinances. 2.8, review of charter and ordinances, which you're doing currently every 15 years. 2.9. As it pertains to when an elected official may or may not serve.
Can I make a talking point for 2.9? Is there a way we can change the language so the sitting council can help on election day and other minimally or non-paid functions within the city?
I want to say there's a state ordinance about elected officials participating in election day activities that might supersede local rule. I could be wrong on that, though, but I think it's an ethical thing.
Or at least for ones that were not being elected into.
I don't think you're prevented from, say, working the polls if you're an elected official.
We were told that by our charter.
But how about the state statute, though?
I don't know enough about state statute, but I was told that our charter was not...
Because it's a paid position within the city to be a poll worker. So even if we were to forego that, so we can't take another job within the city while we're sitting.
That's a good point.
But foregoing, doing it for free? I would recommend, I mean, let's say hypothetically it was there. I'd probably recommend elected officials, just out of my own personal thoughts, abstaining from any type of election day activities because it could be misconstrued as undue influence or intimidation. It's there. There's a reason this is here.
So Sue did some more research on this when she provided it to Councilor Boss and Councilor McLeod, but I can, I can make sure we have that for the next meeting, just to see what she was referencing. Well, and the other issue too is, wasn't there an issue with the fact that having people in, in the offices uncompensated? Is that not an issue? I mean, that's the reason we pay them is because they're in the building, working, doing something for the city. I'm sure she's taking either language that's from this charter and also comparing that with any election rules and state, from the Secretary of State. So I think it would probably be best just to have her give some clarification. And this also references 2.9 regarding employment within at least one year after leaving office. All right, hearing nothing else on Article 2, we'll move to Article 3, which is mayor. 3.1, election tenure of office. Again, we can talk about terms when we reference terms a little further on in the charter.
Mr. Manager?
Yes.
I'm not sure if this, where this would come in, but Lewiston has a council president elected by the council.
You do.
Is there a place in the charter where we would consider that?
I think it would be under your powers and duties as a council, but we can take a look at how Lewiston has that written.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at that. Thank you.
I'm not familiar with, what's the, what's the council president do?
Helps to run the meetings. If the, if the mayor is not available, they're the person who is in charge.
Vice mayor.
I mean, it's not quite, I don't think it's quite, it would be good to hear the job description. I don't think it's quite as broad as a vice.
That was a kinder, that was a kinder of the two definitions I've heard. The other one was a union whip. And yeah, I've heard that one, the union whip and then, you know, and/or the vice mayor. I like the vice mayor, I thought it was kinder.
Yeah, I just know, for example, what happened in Lewiston where the mayor had to step down because there was a president of the council.
That's on, that's on Section 3.2. I mean, so there's adjustments already made in the charter. I'll just, you know, bring, bring that to everybody's attention. So when, whenever the office of mayor becomes vacant, within six months prior to the next municipal election, or whenever the mayor, for any reason, is unable to attend to the duties of his or her office, the city council shall appoint one of its members as presiding officer to perform the duties of mayor. The latter part happens real time. For example, if I'm out of the country or out of state, unable to attend, you all vote, I don't think we've done it this year, you all vote for a mayor pro temp. And right in the beginning of the meeting, that's how you open it up, and that mayor pro temp serves. If for whatever reason I had to step down, for example, just use me as an example, I'm sure there's probably some examples back in history that I'm not just unaware of, then you would elect your mayor pro temp until a new mayor could be elected, either through municipal election process or a special election, actually, not even a special election, the next municipal election. So for the mayor, there is no, am I wrong on that? There is no, there is no special election. There is for council.
And could it be anybody?
Yeah. Yeah, I just think I'd like to consider it, and my reasoning behind it is if somebody is the president, then they know the job that they're stepping into if they need to, so...
So that would happen under councilor's responsibilities?
There is a special election clause in there for the mayor. It depends if it's before or within six months or longer than six months. Third line down.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right, you're right. Filled by special election, right? Unless it's, you have six months, unless there is six months to another, which would then fill that term. And there are several municipal elections as well throughout the year, at least two, so...
All right, that was 3.2 vacancy. We moved right into that. 3.3, powers and duties. And 3.4, again, this is similar language that we saw under council. Hearing nothing further, we'll move on to Article 4, which is school committee, starting with their powers and duties.
Can I make a, I mean, a recommendation? Nothing to stop us from going through this. But as I was thinking about this, wouldn't it make sense to invite some members of the school committee, or at least the chair, to come and actually be part of that conversation or that section, Article 4 specifically? I mean, we can go through it now to see if there's anything that's glaring, but they might have a... I mean, Brian has a great insight, obviously, by being on the, on the school committee as well, but there might be a different set of perspectives on this from them. Just an idea.
Is this, are we making arrangements so that the school committee is able to review their section before?
That's, I'm asking them to come, I'm asking you to think about and discuss them coming here because it is our responsibility as a charter, but nothing precludes us during their review process from inviting different folks in to speak to something that might specifically pertain to that.
I'd like to go.
Yeah, rather than them taking this, having their time to sit with it by themselves, sit here in the meeting with us?
Yeah. Just at least talk about this section. Do you want to bring that up to them?
Yes.
And ask them.
I would recommend it might be best for the school committee to review their section and then send a representative as the chair to this meeting rather than a full group meeting, only because of limitations on space.
And that way they can come with specific questions or concerns.
Correct. So if you'd like, we can move on from Article 4. We'll wait for that to take place.
Unless there's anything that's the, the city council, I think, might want to cover now beforehand?
Yeah, if you have some recommendation that might go to them for consideration, we can do that as well. So anything in Article 4? Seeing nothing pressing, we'll go to Article 5, which is your nominations and elections. This is where you would begin having your conversations regarding length of term, staggered terms, all things that I know we've had conversations.
And I'm sorry, if I could, I'd just like to go back to Section 4.8, and I have that in my notes too. Section 4.8, office incompatibility, school board. "No member shall hold any other city office or employment during the term for which the member was elected. Nothing in this section shall be construed to prohibit a member from representing the city on the governing board. No member shall hold any other city office or employment." This has come up historically, okay, specifically with teachers either running for city council or other, let's say, public works folks running for school board. With school board, it's, it's, it's very narrowly focused, and I'm wanting to just throw this out there that that might not be an appropriate clause to have within this charter. In other words, if someone from public ser, works wanted to run for the school board right now, they couldn't. They couldn't be employed by the city and serve. Any thoughts?
I see it the other way, that the language could be changed slightly so that if a teacher were on our school board, they wouldn't be able to work for the city for the term in which they were elected, not necessarily if they were still serving. There's no really out there.
I'm sorry, what was the first part? I didn't...
So if a teacher, if a teacher was elected to the school board for their term, it says they can't be employed for the term in which they were elected. It doesn't have an out that they could step down six months because they got a great job at Edward Little and they want to remove themselves. They still wouldn't be eligible for employment for the term they were elected, from that wording, as I read it.
I almost kind of like the idea of precluding school employees from being on the school board in their, in its entirety, and, yeah, and making that exception, like, okay, I just got a great job at Edward Little. I'd step down from school board to take that job.
Right.
Effective immediately, in theory, I guess, but, and vice versa, probably for city council. I think that if you're a municipal employee, you shouldn't be on the city council. But you could, as a municipal employee, be on the school board, and as a school employee, be on the city council.
As, you'd be in charge of doing your own budget. There'd be an issue with that. I'm not much good with this because I've been a Hatch Act employee for the last 40 years, so I don't... I was a Hatch Act employee 40 years. You're never allowed to hold your office and hold a job. If you, if, if I had wanted to run for mayor, I literally had to... If you, if, if, if I had wanted to run for mayor, I literally had to ask for a leave of absence for however long, so that I would have nothing to do with the office.
And I think, I think that Councilor Carrier is correct, if you're responsible for the budget that determines your pay, right? If you are, if you are a teacher and you're on the city council, part of your job is to determine, not the individual pay, but determine the budget.
Budget.
Is that too direct aligned?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
And you could potentially have two school budget reps at that point, because then you're, you'd have Councilor Carrier who's on the school board, but then as a teacher, all my friends, I would get somebody else to be, who's on the school board as well, so it starts getting muddy.
On the flip side of it, how about someone from public works being on the school committee?
As manager who would oversee that employee, I would not want that employee on an elected board, or running for an elected office.
Which employee, school and?
Especially for the city, city employee to run for a public office because the school committee member is a public office, that they would campaign for, they would run for, and be an employee within the city. I would not support that.
And, and so, just to be clear, you're talking specifically in terms of the school board, or are you also including the city council? So if somebody worked for public works, you wouldn't want them?
It would definitely not be part of city council.
Okay.
But, but to open that door, as was mentioned, to at least be able to serve on the school committee, really puts either the department or that employee in a very difficult position, depending on their job.
Okay.
If you're getting a paycheck from the city of Auburn, where's stipend but an employee, I don't think you should be in elected office.
Yeah, I don't think so.
But it doesn't preclude somebody that works for the city of Auburn being elected to hold an office of their hometown if it's Lewiston, a pole, and Mechanic Falls.
That's correct.
So if they're a teacher in one of those schools, then, I mean, if they live in Auburn and they're a teacher, then it's not, it's not going to be held against them.
In a different town.
Different. We have the chairman of the school board as a teacher in a different town.
True, yeah. Yeah, she is, that's fine. Okay, I just wanted to, these certain things that I keep hearing in the community and people talk about, this is the time to bring them up, right?
It, this rule doesn't stop you from running. It says that you may be prohibited to take the office after you've run and won, so it doesn't really stop you from running, anyone can run for office. You may not be able to be sworn in.
I don't know what scenario would that actually?
Why would you?
You either have to quit your job or?
Quit your job.
Right. The one or the other at that point.
You had, which was the chair of the planning board that ran against me and lost, but he worked for the school department, he still ran, nobody stopped him from doing it. He ran all the way to the end and he lost to me in the polls. And he was going to fight it, he was going to go to court and say that he won the election and he wanted to be a counselor. It didn't get all the way to that point, but he had the right to do it.
And it's all your fault because you beat him. You shouldn't, yeah.
I could have had this reviewed through legal.
I think that's good. I think, no motion on that one.
All right, Article 5. Again, this is your date of elections and your procedures. And this is the sentence where this changed in 2006 as it pertains to the, the terms of councilors and school committee members shall begin and end simultaneously.
So how do we, how do we move on changing that a little bit? What would be the, a fair process to make us not all start and stop at the same time period? Either stagger or?
Is it here, is it in a different superseding order section?
Yeah, we would look to, we would have legal determine where best that would sit, but we would have, if the group, as a council, you wanted to either include staggered terms or do something, then we would come back with the language on how do you, how do you enter that.
Is this the correct place for it, though? This would be the area?
This would be the time to discuss it, yes.
So, 5.3, I don't, I personally do not have a problem with the amount of signatures that need to be gathered, but I've heard people discuss that it's onerous running for mayor when you need 100 signatures. Why is that so different? I'm just saying, so are people okay with those numbers? 25 for council and committee, school committee, and 100 for mayor?
That's pretty much what you have to use to run for the legislature.
Okay, I just wanted to, somebody asked me about it and I said I would bring it up.
I've done it twice, and it's no fun. By any means, not fun, challenge, big challenge, but I, I think it's important.
Okay.
The, the other thing on, on, just so, before we go into making motions on moving dates and when you're elected, I personally, I like what it is now, so I wouldn't vote. I just want you to, maybe you should feel out how many people would like to see a, a three-year, two-year, one-year, whatever it is, before we waste a lot of time on moving it forward.
Great suggestion, yeah. I mean, I don't think anyone's made a motion to make any change, so we might not have any discussion, I guess. I agree with you, Counselor.
But if they do or want it, we should feel it out now and not, you know, discuss this thing right now.
We can make a motion to change it, but I don't think anyone has a concrete idea, so let's just brainstorm a little bit, and I'll start it off. There's something to be said about staggered terms, because you lose, you don't lose all, or potentially all the legacy knowledge. You could theoretically have a brand-new council, a brand-new mayor every two years. Staggered kind of makes sense, I wish they did that at the legislature level. They do it at the US Senate, they don't do it in the US House, so it's a mixed bag. Staggered two-year terms, staggered three-year terms, staggered four, you know? Again, I know that just, there's, this is, there's models out there for everything, including here in Maine. You know, there's term limits, they, where people have longer initial terms and only one option for reelection. Mayor, two-four-year terms, cap done, or threes, or three-threes, and Lewiston, I believe, is three-threes, or three-twos, three-twos. So I'd just throw that out there. There is some benefits, I mean, if you want to talk about the benefits of staggered versus non-staggered first?
I think it's valuable to have staggered terms.
One of the issues is the whole having elections every year for, just putting that out there is, that's one of the things that people have said can be an issue, is that you're doing an election every year for councilors.
Would that align with our referendum and our school budget at the same time, or would it be different election periods? Because we're voting every year regardless.
We're voting every year in November, school budgets are in June, June. But what you, you just kind of mentioned is moving our election from November to coincide with the school budget, would by state statute have to be in June, no later than July 1?
Necessarily proposing that we move it, I'm just saying that we are voting every year regardless, so.
Oh, yeah, we are, yeah.
You know, we're going to the polls.
Twice a year.
One way, yeah, exactly.
At least, three times a year, depending.
So, and I know that in other municipalities, I think it's in Bangor, they do three-year staggered terms.
How many councilors do they have, do you know? Off the top of your head?
Seven.
I'm just wondering how you fairly spread out the, the staggered terms between the wards and the at-large?
The mayor is elected and not elected, that's one. The mayor is the chair of the city council, elected from, by its peers, so that is one thing.
I think they're elected, three positions on the council are up for election every year in November.
Well, I mean, before we go too deep into, like Leroy said, I mean, we could do this, you know, Bangor City Council, right here. But is there an appetite, I guess, without doing a motion right now, is there an appetite to even look further, further at different examples that might be, or municipal examples that might be out there?
I'd be interested in having staff do some research on what other municipalities have for models who have staggered terms.
And it was a recommendation for the joint charter to do staggered terms.
As well as including two or three years, depending on how that looks.
Well, so now we have the semblance of a motion.
Right.
Which is great, that's the whole process, okay, the whole point. If Councilor Boss or Councilor McCloud or, I think Councilor Zonia, if anybody wants to make a motion to that effect, now is the time to do it.
I'd like to hear, see what other municipalities have for examples, because I think.
So, I would recommend you make the motion to actually direct staff to do exactly what you just said.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion to direct staff to do research into other Maine municipalities that have staggered terms for their city council.
Second.
Got a bunch of Councilor Boss and a second from Councilor Zonia, all those in favor? Hold on, hands up, please. One, two, three, four. Opposed? Three, okay. Motion passes by about a fourth, three, so just a summary, staff, this will be on the slate of proposed changes, pending further staff review and examples given. Okay? Correct that summary of your motion? Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, just for clarification, it won't be on the slate of amendments, it will be directed staffed and I'll bring it back on the 9th. When we bring back all the information as a group, you would then vote whether or not you want it on the slate.
Like old business follow-up, got it. Okay, very good. So it will not be on the slate, but it will be brought up to be on the slate on the next meeting post information.
And I think one of the things, because it can be kind of complicated, is to sort of play out the scenario, whether it's in a PowerPoint slide or something, so that you see exactly how it works. So, for example, if we change, some people would have a shorter term this time around as we move through the change.
And I would also, well, if we're going to go around and look to see what it is, as Councilor Boss said, to see what, I mean, in all honesty, you know, one-year, two-year, three-year, I mean, you, when you say three years, you may get people going, I can't make a commitment for three years, so, I mean, as long as that's being brought back and looked at also, I'd.
You don't have to do a one-year term either, you can do the two, three, after that it will start to roll into place if you went that way. I, I think it's going to be a tough, a tough sell.
I don't support three-year terms.
Well, just, just, I mean, we did make a motion, I mean, we can, we're going to do a little bit more information, then we can have time to debate about it next meeting.
For any municipality with any staggered terms, regardless of the length of term, that's not what I'm interested in. I'm interested in any municipality that uses a staggered term.
That's the only thing we had wanted to look at was how the staggered terms in other municipalities. We didn't put in the motion the number of years for those terms.
No, that's what I'm saying. And that's not part of it.
Now you're talking about years.
Right.
Okay, that's fair enough.
And Councilor Carrier brought that up, talking about two or three-year terms. I'm not in favor of three-year terms. I'm not in favor of four-year terms. I've heard all the discussions through all the years. It's hard enough now to get people to commit to two years to run for office. If somebody has to think that they can have to work three years, that may disclude some of them. I've also heard some of you new councilors said, hey, if I knew how hard it was, this was going to be, I don't think I'm going to run next year. So, and then it's not fair to our constituents. The longer the terms, the longer it is for some, some of our constituents to see their, their city councillor. We've had councilors through the years that once they did their door knocking and got elected, that was the last of people's sorrow of them, or if people called, constituent called them, they were too busy with their own lives to help their constituents, and they would say, oh, you're going to call public works, that's a public work issue, and hang them up. That's not the job of our city council, we're supposed to do what we can to help our constituents, even if we can't do anything, at least we can do something by listening to them.
Agreed, I just, we, when we start getting away from what our charter obligations are and what an, each individual expectation of the job is, that probably won't get us through it, but I, I don't disagree with you, I'm just saying it's, you know, unless we want to write that stuff into the charter, saying, your job as a city councillor is to handle, you know, constituent concerns, then it might not be the, more appropriate. But if you're talking about the years, you know, and we want to make a debate, you know, on years, yea or nay, or just a discussion, I'd love, I mean, we could put a motion on the floor, we could start debating on that, you know? Does that make sense? I mean, if you guys want to start talking about two versus three versus four years?
Well, we'll do that later, I think we're going to deal with what.
Deal with this first, and then we can move into it from there. Fair enough, okay.
All right, 5.2 is wards and wardens, for clerks, wardens and wards. Hearing nothing there, we'll go to 5.3, nominations for elective offices. This gets to what Councilor Lasagna was mentioning regarding petitions or signatures. Hearing nothing, we'll go to 5.4, nomination petition. Just the timeline for that. 5.5 is your list of candidates, when they will be posted and made available. 5.6 is your official ballot. And also when they'll be available. All right.
Do we have a process?
Oh, sorry.
I just had a question, do we have a process, or is it an ordinance or in policy, what we do in the event that we don't have anyone pull papers for a ward or enough nominees for at-large? Have we historically had that happen, where we just had no one interested in running?
Yeah. You've had that for, definitely for your school committee.
Process for?
You run another, at the next.
Special election.
Special election, right.
Okay, so there would be a vacancy until a special election passes, okay.
Or if nobody takes their name out, somebody could run as a write-in candidate. All they need to win by is one signature, I think more than 25. So if somebody really wanted to and they saw nobody was running, anybody could throw their hat into the ring.
Great.
So you do have language on being a write-in and what that process would take.
Would this be the right section to add a term limits amendment?
I'm sorry, to add?
For it to add term limits, if that was?
Not many.
Or this be a different section?
Should be under individual elected positions, councilor.
Right, so, well, we had talked about moving it to this section to have the full discussion.
Oh, okay.
But, so yes, term limits would, we could certainly have it under this article, it then would just go back to those three different sections where they talked about term limits, and that's for council, mayor, and school committee.
Gotcha.
But we can do it, this would be the time to do it, beyond what was already discussed and proposed, so.
Right. I, I, so do we, can we have a conversation or is this a motion?
I think you can have a conversation, see if there's any interest, unless you have a fully thought-out proposal.
Not that far ahead. I was just looking at something along the lines of a three consecutive term, term limit, so that way eventually the whole council and mayor would turn over after a certain period. So that's something in that realm, I don't know what the right numbers are. If we were to moving to three years, and that might be different down to two, but if, you know, depending on just kind of how it is, so the school committee and us would also turn over, so we're not, we don't have legacy members forever.
So now you're talking about, well, when you say like three-twos or two-threes, are you, are you getting it to the point of a proposal of six years, max?
No, consecutive.
Consecutive?
Consecutive, yes.
Maximum consecutive?
Somewhere in there, yeah. I don't know where that falls, though.
But consecutive, if, right now, if, say like, if we didn't change the terms, I mean, the years of our terms now, three consecutive terms would be a total of six years.
Of six, yeah.
I'm, I would support that.
And then taking, and then, and then requiring at least one, one term off before you could run for another.
I'll throw something in there for, oh, Brian, go.
Well, and that's what I was going to do, I'm going to throw something in there, so you do three terms as a councilman, what's to prohibit you from running for mayor?
Nothing.
Nope, nothing.
And as soon as you run for mayor, you could drop back and run for council again.
Yes.
But it should be, it should be the office versus the, yes, I mean, you could, what you're saying is, yeah, you agree, you could do six years as council, and then six years as mayor, and then six years as council. Or you could go from Ward 2 to at-large.
Well, that would, that would be a nuance that we would have to decide if we have appetite for, but that was the other part, yes.
I guess that was my question, is, we need, if we're going to do this, you might want to put it out there, because as we, as we've all seen, we've, we've got people that have been places for 30 years, 40 years.
It's not a bad, a term limit, I think, is not bad at all.
But even still, even if you went from, you know, Ward 1 to at-large for a thing, it's still a different group of people who are voting you in, and a different collection of signatures, probably.
It opens up Ward 1 for, or Ward 3 for a new person.
I mean, it doesn't, right, it doesn't free the council up of a different person, but it, at least.
You have to be optimistic, they're there.
I've, I've ran five terms, and two for sure out of the five terms, nobody ran at all, so I don't, I don't really think I agree with you on putting term limits. So, I don't, I don't really think I agree with you on putting term limits. First of all, I think that would be more up to your ward making that decision if they want you or don't want you. So I don't, I don't know why you would want to be the one telling my ward people that Leroy shouldn't run, because four of the seven of us may say they want term limits. I disagree with it anyways.
So if you have, again, I'll ask, if you have a fully formed thought, if anyone has a fully formed thought after progressing through the conversation a little bit and wants to make a motion, then we can really get into the debate portion of it, and either keep it going to another meeting, because it's going to be on the slate, or it goes away for now?
I, I will make a fully formed motion then, saying just that, that we have three, so six, so three consecutive two-year terms as it stands now, just until we change that, if it changes.
I'm going to just paraphrase a little, work you through this a little if I could.
Yes.
So, you'd like to make a motion to amend the charter to cap the number of years at six.
Consecutively.
At cap, or introduce a term limit of no more than six consecutive years in the same elected office.
Yes, with the, with the exception of if no one runs against you, that you would continue to fill that slot.
And you want to make that motion? You want, that's your second part of that? If it's.
No, just the first part. We'll start there.
Okay, start there. So we have a motion on the floor. I'm going to say it one more time. You correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
That every elected, are all elected positions, this will be an amendment to the charter, all elected positions are capped at six consecutive, six consecutive years in the same elected position.
Do you want to say six consecutive two-year terms?
No, that's kind of still out there a little bit. Just six years. Okay, that way, it's, at least it's a little ambiguous. Everything else will have to be deconflicted based upon other motions later on. So, the motion stands. Do I have a second? Or not a motion, it stands. Some motions on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion from Counselor McLeod, second from Counselor Gary. Debate.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I agree with Counselor Walker, that I think it's up to the people in the wards to decide if they want to have somebody continue on after six years. It's local politics, which to me is different than, say, if you were a senator in Washington, DC, where you're not around your constituents and responding to them as directly as you do here. That's.
We also, if we're going to change terms, you could conceivably write in something where if we go two and three, we could write in a rule that someone, all of a sudden, you've been in five years, I'm not, and now I run, my term goes to two years, now I'm, do I have to step down after seven year, after six years? So if we change, if we change the number of years from two to three, and you started at two, then my ward happens to be the one that goes to three at the next term, I'm now at five, and now.
There, there's usually language on the launch of any charter, okay, that helps with any of the transitional periods, and makes exemptions for the rules in accordance.
If we adopted that.
Yes, yeah, then that, it's, it's once you finally get everything, kind of, it's part of the deconfliction process, and then you'll make, whether like a temporary or transitional changes, so in case something like that did happen, it could allow you to go to seven years, you know, in order to make it concurrent.
Or whatever.
Yeah, something like that, I mean, but yes, it wouldn't, you wouldn't be forced vacant. I mean, that would be.
First time.
Huh? Say again?
We'd violate the charter on the first time.
You'd need at least a year of nonviolations. Yeah. Okay, so there's still a motion, debate. Questions? No? Bring it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read by Counselor McLeod and seconded by Counselor Gary? Raise your hands. All those opposed?
I'm in favor. I'm sorry.
I didn't, I didn't wrap my gavel. You're fine, you're fine, you're fine. I'm going to, you're thinking, that's good.
I'm in favor.
So I'd like to ask, I'm going to call the vote one more time. All those in favor of term limit concepts as proposed for the charter addition, as proposed by Counselor McLeod, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Opposed. Passes for three.
So what we will do is, we will not send that language for legal, to be reviewed for language for the ordinance, until after you've determined your language for staggered terms. So, so that one will come, won't come at the next meeting, will come at the one, at the actual slate. We'll try to make sure that gets you.
And we could still vote against it if we changed.
Of course, of course. You're not bound.
And we can have, we'll do some sample language, so you'll see it. All right, Article Six, City Manager, 6.1.
Elimination.
Point.
The whole article.
6.1, Appointment. Process. 6.2, Salary by Order. 6.3, Qualifications. And Residence is also in here. 6.4, Powers and Duties. Two pages. 6.5, The Removal. And 6.6, The Vacancy.
Anything? I don't think of all parts of this charter, I think this section has gotten the most exercise over the last 10 years, in review and scrutiny and use, so I, I think it's pretty straight.
All right. Moving on, Article Seven, Departments, Offices and Agencies. This is as it pertains to 7.1, Bullet A, Creation of Departments. Created by you as a council, that they're not already referenced in Charter.
So, just a question on that. For example, when we're changing something like the Rec Department, the Parks Department, that doesn't have to go through this process? Or it does?
Changing the Rec Department to?
Well, for example, when.
Oh, Parks.
Talking about making some changes there, that has to go through this process?
Does.
We did that recently with Communications, the form of the Communications Department, and it come through an order.
You officially changed the name of Public Works during the budget process, the last budget process, I believe it was, that fell in line with this requirement. B, Direction by City Manager. Just that all departments, offices and agencies come under the supervision of the manager. And that as mayor and council, you direct all functions through the city manager. 7.2 is the Personnel System. Merit Principle, as it pertains to appointments and promotions. B is the Merit System.
So that's what you guys are doing today?
Merit Principle.
The merit, yeah, and a merit system?
So, yes, I mean, we would be, decisions of promotions are done through testing or through appointment based off from someone's capabilities, experience, knowledge.
Opposed and not who they know.
Correct. That's really what this language is regarding tenure or.
Remember historical context, up until 1933, 34, the mayor appointed everybody, from the tax collector to the assessor, head of PW. Yeah, that was, it's good old days. Just saying that, I mean, not a suggestion, might be a suggestion.
I'm not hearing a motion.
No, no motion on that.
Moving on.
Before we move on, if there's nothing else in Section 7.2, I'd just like to call about a five-minute recess, some break. It's, we've been at it for an hour and 15. It's about halfway through. Just give everybody a stretch break for five, before we go into Financial Management. Okay? So, at this point, we will stand in recess for five minutes. For me, but it's. Testing, testing.
Three bills.
Brian? Our on-air light is off, but the mics are hot, so I just wanted to verify that we're alive.
It flickered again.
Did it flicker?
Yep.
It's on, okay. I'm going to assume that that is working, and we are live. We're now seeing out of recess. Let's, Mr. Manager, we're on Financial Management, Article Eight.
Moving on to page 14, Article Eight, 8.1, Our Fiscal Year. Strongly suggests we don't change that. Process. It'd be nice if we can encourage the county to move to fiscal year, that'd be something we can move at some point. But we'll keep our charter here. 8.2, Submission of Budget and Budget Message.
I'm not sure if this is the place to ask about this, but we do, we have a Subcommittee that is newly formed. Am I incorrect about this? And he ties this on it to, I think it's, maybe it's purchasing I'm talking about.
You're talking auditing and purchasing, it's chartered, I believe, or in ordinance, rather.
But auditing.
It's not auditing the budget per procurement.
Yeah.
And the actual audit of the budget with the auditors, I believe, too, is optional in that one.
So, in the language, you had a language regarding procurement to create a policy. Once that policy was done, that Committee of Procurement ended.
Okay.
Because they had a specific function as of the way that it was written in Charter. Now you also have an Audit Committee.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to sit on 8.2 here for a second and talk about this one. Talking about budget on the first day of May of each year, this may or may not be the appropriate time to input this, but I'm going to say it. I do think there's some give and take here on the budget, is it annual or biannual? And I think biannual is something that's deserved for this body to talk about, and doesn't preclude any adjustments to be made annually. For example, the legislature does a biannual budget, but they also do a supplemental budget in the off-years, based upon forecasting, shortfalls, additions and so forth. And mill rates by state statute must be set annually, so a supplemental process would have to happen. So I just want to throw that out there, as something that, in today's day and age, with the technology that we have in budgeting, I'd like to ask Phil for some thoughts on the time, efficiency and modernization of that.
Well, I think you'd certainly have efficiency. As anything, it's always challenging for forecasting, but that's why you have a supplemental. And so that's how it's done currently, and with those who, who do have that option. So I think it would certainly easily be done. Part of that supplemental would be that, that's when you would, at that supplemental process and the, in the language, that's when you would actually determine the mill rate for each year. You would not try to do that in a two-year period, but, so that process could easily be done.
So, in theory, just to exercise this out a little bit more, you know, on this section, you know, on or before the first day of May of each year, the City Manager shall submit to the City Council either a budget or a supplemental budget for the ensuing fiscal year, or some sort of language like that. So it'd be, you know, every even year, for example, you know, if we, theoretically, if we did this, it would not be able to be in effect for the fiscal year '21. Fiscal year '22 would be the first biennium budget, two-year budget, so it'd be every, every even year, the City Manager would, would produce a biannual or a two-year budget to the council for approval, and then every odd year, the City Manager before May 1, would provide a supplemental budget to the council fixing the mill rate. I'm kind of paraphrasing a little bit, but that's concept. Counselor?
I'd recommend that any, or any motion, I'm sorry, any motion that you move on this evening would just be, again, to, concept is what you would be voting on, and then we would then come back with language, because I think there's a lot of, that we would need to really dig into. We'd have to look at state statute, see what other communities may or may not be doing, and then propose language at a future meeting.
So, two things, and, and, one, the goal of a biennial budget would be, allow us to, and again, you can't forecast, you never know what's going to happen, but allow us to look two years ahead and say, give us kind of a longer view in terms of our budgeting. And it would affect your budget each year, saying, we know in two years. The disadvantages of doing it, would it be more time on the part of the council to have to come up with a biennial budget? Biennial budget? And then the off-year, it's shorter because you're just doing, I mean.
Yeah, I think you're looking at your second year, and again, this would, with the way that it's currently, the terms are currently written, that would work very, very well, because you would, you'd come in your first year, you would set your budget for your term. Everybody would then come back up for reelection, and so that, that process, as it currently is, works well. Moving forward, would be like it is, like it would be back when we had staggered terms, you might come in and you'd be part of a budget, you'd be responsible for a budget that was voted in by a previous council for at least six months, is what, the way that it had been previous to now.
That's what happens.
So, I think you're right, Council lasagna. I think that it would be pretty much the same process in the beginning, in that first year, as what it would take for you to create a budget now. It would be that, second year would be a reduced time, which would then not take, uh, you know, upwards of six months of your meetings of budget discussions. A supplemental budget could be done within, you know, a couple months.
I just want, do we know of other cities that are doing this?
We'd have to do some research, I'm not sure.
Okay, I mean, I would say, I don't know if I needed a motion to this, that we look, we should look into this.
Yeah, we'll take them, if someone's ready to form a motion, let me know, we can continue the debate. But one question else before, while everybody's trying to form an idea of the motion. We talked about council time, how about staff time?
Yeah, I mean, I think for staff, it would be the same way. What, the challenges, the biggest challenge, we could pretty much predict most expenditures. Obviously, we don't know what health insurance is coming in at. There are certain ones that we wouldn't know that would be the supplemental process. Probably the biggest challenge for us would be projecting revenues, uh, what's happening at a state level. Uh, but we would, we would use, we'd use, uh, history and look at our, our trending data and determine that, and we would make that process. So staff time, I think it's a, um, one year out of that two-year process would be a time saver.
What about contracts, union contracts?
Those run anyway. They don't run in accordance with any of your budgets, so, um, the way that we word it, though, when we talk about, uh, budgets is, when we talk about budget drivers, most of the time, that's what has been already approved by either you or a previous council in a contract that does drive the budget, because you've already approved a two percent plus steps or something along those lines.
So, at this time, does anybody wanna propose a motion? This motion would go for this to be researched further by staff with results coming back to us at our next meeting. Anybody wanna propose a motion?
I make a motion that we ask the staff to research, um, biennial budget.
Biennial budget option, okay, very good. We have a motion, do I have a second, do I have a second?
Can we make a friendly amendment to add the supplemental budget annually? So not just-
To a biennial, okay, so may I motion to have staff explore biennial budget supplemented with a supplemental budget?
Yes.
On the off-years, very good. And I have a second from Counselor Carey. All those in favor? Sorry, Counselor Carey, you're, okay. Opposed? Passes five-two.
I would like to make an amendment to this section on the budget. Instead of on or before the first day of May, could we get the budget in March, which would give us more time to review it and look at it and do our own process thinking and then have our meetings to cut it down if we had to? I mean, as we do our research and stuff, come up with our motions so that we craft a better budget instead of having to hurry up and, and cut everything or add everything last minute.
So, the budget, currently, just recap, um, it's on or before the first day of, of May of each year. And, you know, in practical purposes, since I've been mayor, we've received the budget, albeit not final budget, well in advance of May, uh, May one. And we go through the process of workshops, giving feedback, uh, feedback and so forth, and then it's constantly edited and updated. And then when it becomes in front of us for two readings, that's when formal amendments can be made. So you're asking that instead of having the final budget, uh, ready for reading in May, you want the final, you want like a window? I just wanna make sure I understand, a window of the final budget after amendments are made by city manager by March one?
I'd like to see, is the whole budget what the departments and the manager proposes, so that we have more time to go through it on our own time, line by line, and then as we have our meetings, we can be better informed. So when committees, I mean, departments come in front of us, we know more about what they're talking and we have better, better questions.
So we already, we, and we, right now, it's, though it's not in charter, we do get the budget, the, the first draft of the manager's budget, um, before March.
Not always.
You usually get it in March, not necessarily before March, but you always get the, um, budget presentations, which would include a preliminary budget, is the way that it's been proposed over the last few years.
So basically, I mean, you would like to see the, I'm just gonna keep paraphrasing a little bit, the first draft, the manager's first proposed draft of the budget, printed and delivered by March one, okay? Then edits would be made on his end, multiple edits based upon feedback or normal process, with still the final submitted for council approval or amendments, uh, by May one. Okay. So, are you making that motion? We're good. We got a motion on the floor, Counselor Carey, do I have a second? Do I have a second for this motion?
Second.
I have a second, okay. So I have a second for Counselor McLeod. Open this up. Thoughts?
I, I, oh, sorry, guys.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is this something that can be done by the direction of the council? Is this something that we could direct you to do without changing the charter, as we, as the council say, city manager, we would like our first draft no later than March first, without having to change the charter part of it?
You-
As a direction?
You could do that, uh, without changing the charter.
Is that a-
The charter states when the official budget has to be submitted, because that, that budget, once it's submitted on May, by May first, or at a meeting when the, the manager says, this is the official budget of the city manager, that is now the official record. So that if the council fails to adopt the budget by June thirtieth, the city manager's budget that was presented on that date would become the official budget, um, through direction, and you do this when you, uh, take a look at the, uh, budget schedule, is when you, you see that and you see that it's currently in March. Prior to March, um, would be difficult. You're moving, um, there's some pieces that we don't have yet, um, even in that. So prior to March would be really difficult to get, you would have, I would have to move, staff would be submitting their budgets now. Uh, where currently, the staff would not be submitting those until December. So that's moving that whole process up about two months, which means staff would then become part of the budget process for, um, you know, over almost, what is it, seven months? Currently, if you look at, and I did take some time to go look at previous budget schedules, as I was developing the one for you coming up, uh, on average, you have about twelve, twelve to fifteen budget meetings, um, throughout every budget process currently. It's a lot of meetings for you, so, um, so I just propose that, that would be out there. Um, but you could do exactly like you said.
It just seems it would be onerous on staff to have to change that timeframe. I do, I respect what Counselor Gary is saying about wanting to have the information in front of you to give you the amount of time, but allowing us to give direction as a council on that, but also understanding where the staff is on submitting their budgets, I, I wouldn't wanna have a hard and fast rule of March first in the charter.
Anybody else, any, anybody else, any other thoughts on this? No? Okay, I'm gonna ask for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is presented by Counselor Gary and seconded by Counselor McLeod, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstained? Motion fails. Counselor Walker, I didn't catch your vote. Oppose or in fa, uh, uh, in favor? Abstained, okay, by, the motion fails by a vote of one, five, one.
Eight point three, budget message, is what you would see in the manager's budget when submitted. Eight point four, the actual budget with the financial plan.
Quite a bit there.
What did you say?
I said I've got quite a bit there.
On the budget?
Eight point four, well, on eight point, I mean, going back a little bit to eight point three.
Okay.
I'd like to see the school committee be part of that when you're talking to them, and I don't know if they currently are or not, but I'd definitely like them to be part of that, so that they understand, prior to them doing their budgets or as they're doing their budgets, that they understand what we're looking at, and they'll probably be upset with me about that. But there has to be an understanding going into our thought about this budget, as to what we are working with, and it'll also carry through to what I'm gonna propose in eight point four, which is, I want them to have to work under the same rules that we work as under a council, which I would like to see a percentage for a fund balance, uh, that's utilized. And under eight point C, uh, the fund, the total of proposed expenditures shall not exceed the total of estimated income plus carried forward fund balance reserves. I'd like to see them stop spending the fund balance every single year, and I'd like to see an emergency reserve held at the school, because the way that that happens now is if the city has something that comes up, we make a reduction, if we have to make a reduction in appropriation, the school, I mean, the city can fall back on the general fund. The school, where they spend the general fund every year, falls back on nothing. They have no reserve, and then they, you know, then it comes back, it comes back to the council. If they had a percentage of the fund balance and they had to leave, uh, you know, X amount of money in there, plus have an emergency reserve, I think that the school would be in much better shape and put the city in a little bit of better shape, uh, by not having to come back and say, hey, we need more money.
Okay, so let's, if we could, you're bringing up a couple different things, right?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure they're separate, so we can get something.
Okay, under eight point three, I would like to see that the school commit, or, the school committee chair or superintendent, either one, doesn't make any error, or both, be part of the, the manager's budget, uh, how's it, budget message. I'd like to see them-
Like a joint budget message?
Well, I'd like them to be part of the budget message. If he's giving them, you know, if he's giving all the department heads, you know, where we are at and how are things going, they need to be a part of that, because they're not separate from us.
Okay, so let's, let's break this down, it's a question, what else you got? Anything else right now, or?
Not in eight point three, but in eight point four I do.
Okay, let's go eight point three. Cool. Okay, so eight point three. You wanna make a motion on eight point three? I think it's worthwhile. Do you, you have that for me?
I wanna make a motion that the school, uh, school committee chair and the superintendent be a part of the city manager's budget message. Second?
I have a sec, okay, so I have a, um, a motion, I have a second, a motion for Counselor Carey, a second for Counselor Milks, stating that the school committee chair and/or superintendent, or and superintendent, shall be part of the city manager's budget message. Okay, great, we're being on the floor now.
I, I, can it be simplified so that in eight point three, the first sentence says, the city manager's message should explain the city budget and the school budget? Is that too simple?
Well, I, I would, um, so we're starting to mix.
Okay.
And so, there's certain things that I'm responsible for, and there's certain things the superintendent's responsible for. I think that I would almost see, um, you create, if this is, the way that, and I'm fine with it, if the council wants to move this direction, but I would almost create a section that states city, with the budget message and budget and then presentation, how that works, and then you would have school with their budget message and when you would want that in that process, just so those two stay separate.
Yep.
But with the same requirements.
Present to the city council, so the superintendent and the chair of the school command, I'm just thinking about this all out, would present to the city manager and city council their budget message on or about X day. Same verbiage here, but they'd have to report back to us.
From a standpoint that, basically, this was your message, it's going out, you're talking to the department heads and giving them the budget goals and, and, can't think of the word, prognosis, what it's looking like for the year, and how they should form their budgets. Well, what you're telling your department heads will be the same thing that you're going to tell the school department.
Yeah, not the way that the charter's currently written, because I have no authority on-
But you're just telling them what the, the standpoint of the city is. You're not telling them how to spend their money. You're saying that the city is, we're looking at budget shortfalls, we're looking at tightening the budget, we're-
Yeah, so that currently, that process would be you as a council, when you have your joint meeting, to discuss what your expectations are for the school budget.
But how, but how close are those to the, I mean, I mean, we're talking about having a-
Through the request from the mayor and the, uh, school committee chair, you're gonna be having that meeting in December. Uh, but that's only because they had chosen to do it sooner, um, so that's where you could put in charter, that would then require that to happen, and you could set up similar, um, expectations like you do for the city manager.
Counselor Carey, is it that you're wanting the school board to have the same economic forecast that the city has, when looking to build their budget?
I do, because what, because what happens, at least from my limited experience, is we have, we had a meeting and we don't, and there's not a lot of discussion about the budget, and what happens is, I get in there and I feel like the doomsayer would go, no, the projections are not gonna be this, you can't, no, you can't think about that much money. I thought if they were there to begin with and they understood what the, the city's, uh, projections are, that instead of having the council have to try to go, you know, go through me and say, hey, this is what they, we did at the last meeting. They're here, they already know. They know what we're facing for shortfalls, they know, so that when they do come back to you, again, it will be their idea of what the school committee needs. See, I'm just saying that you're telling them how much money we're going to be looking at having to work with. You're not telling them how to spend the money, like you don't tell Public Works how to spend their money. You're saying, you get X amount of money, figure it out. Well, this is the chance where we get to tell the school, this is what it's gonna look like, this is what you should plan on, so.
So I, I would recommend that your language be that you as a council provide that, not as the city manager, who has no authority over a superintendent or the school committee.
So here, here comes a headline in the paper tomorrow, right? City council, I'm not saying this is a bad thing, there's two ways to do this. There is to go back to the, uh, how the school committee is governed within the charter, and add some language in there that the school committee, um, must be, could be, this is extremes, right? The school department becomes a department of the city, so the school committee, and so the superintendent that they hire, that's doable. And that would automatically fall, um, fall under the city manager's budget message. That's one way of looking at it. The other way is that you require the school committee, uh, to, you know, present a budget by a certain day, which they're not right now, they don't really do, or to have a meeting to get intent from the council beforehand, or we accept the city manager's budget messaging, and then upon acceptance, it's automatically forwarded as part of our record to this, uh, school committee for preparation of their final budget presentation, though the timing's difficult here, because the manager's budget message is May one, and we have to approve by May fifteenth, the school budget, before it goes on to vote. I, there's, I, I get you, I see where you're coming from, and I'm just kinda talking out loud during this process. There's a couple different options to accomplish it. You might wanna, and we might wanna say that, and again, this might be a substantial change, that we do not want the school budget voted on by the residents. We eliminate that portion completely. And it has to be approved in its entirety by the city council, just like any other departmental budget.
So you have a state statute that regulates some of that, and so the state statute goes to the voters to determine whether or not certain questions are brought before them and whether or not budget's brought, so, um, so we'd have to navigate some of that, so.
So then we would just make it, see, I just want them to be included in the process, in, of, of getting the projections of what we're looking at.
I think you can, I think you would just break it out, as I mentioned, there's a, there's a school, um, section, and then there's a city section. And in that school section, they can receive the same, all the same information, just it's really, you're not, you're not, you can't, you just can't cross, um, authority between a city manager and a superintendent, because earlier on in this charter, it makes it very clear on who's responsible, so.
Except for the Department of Education.
Right.
But you're not, you're not really giving them anything, and, and we can do it that way. All you're doing is providing them with information that you would provide to any other department, and they are separate, but they do get their budget from us, so all you're doing is be providing them in their information.
The message that I provide the department directors is usually somewhere around, uh, December, uh, early on in December. That's when they get their direction on how to build their budget, um, so, and I imagine the superintendent does the same thing.
Mm-huh.
Because by the time, because you, as a school, as a school board, when do you start reviewing?
Right.
It's like March, right?
Yep.
So, it's, it's all happening about the same time, so- It's all happening about the same time, so, um, but I think if you're going to have language that requires the school to hit certain benchmarks, certain dates of expectations, this is where you would have it. This, it would be right in here. It'd just be separated.
That section or under the school committee section?
It's under financial management, I would put it right here.
Put it right there.
But you would break it out so that city and school are defined differently.
We do have a motion on the floor, just wanted to remind you, I mean, if we want to get away from that motion, let's just kill it right now and move on to another one, but I'll leave that up to the, you know.
You know, we can vote on it, vote it down. I just, I just wanted it in there somehow or other, that we were providing the school committee with the information so that really they're, they're having an idea of where we can go with that, because if, if we don't provide them the information, other than me, then they're just going to, it's going to be, okay, we want this, this, and this, and this, and this, and there's no, there's no foot in reality unless they know what our projections are going to be.
And I think there needs to be some, we need to hold the school committee to a standard, and in our charter right now, really, they aren't. Um, now, they might have some own internal policies and SOPs that govern how they do their budget process and present it and so forth, um, and maybe we just haven't seen that or don't know. Is this one of those things where we can just look at further through staff and myself and the chair of the school committee, and kind of investigate further in preparation for bringing representatives of the school committee into us?
I would modify my motion to have the staff look at it.
Okay.
And bring it back to us, along with the school committee.
Because, great points.
So we could vote down this motion and then have a new one to ask this.
I think, whatever, doesn't make any difference.
We'll just do this. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion's denied.
Did we have a, oh, so you took a motion on that?
Yeah, we did. Okay, so that motion's denied.
Now, well, then we're just bringing it up as a part of the council, then, so.
We're asking them to do research.
Yeah, we're asking them to do research, just a motion, just make a motion, not on the slate.
Make a motion that the city look into adding this, uh, school board into a section in the charter to make them aware of the budgetary projections for the city. Just look at it. Is that right?
Guidance.
Guidance.
So I would, um, probably what's best would be that you would direct staff to review Article Eight, financial management, with the superintendent to make recommendations back before the council, as expectations of the school committee would fall in compliance with the city.
What he said.
Got it. It'd be to make sense, because now the school committee can meet, that this will be included upon their master list for us to be presented to and to consider. Okay, do I have a second? I have a second for Councilor Gary, all those in favor? Pro, seven, zero. I think that's a smart way to do it, but they're great, great points that I think are.
I agree.
Are not covered in our charter with, I think, for whatever reason, so they need to be addressed. Awesome.
Now we're going to eight, four, can I make the motion?
Great. If you want to just propose it before you make the motion in order to, you know, get the full thought out there, yes.
Yeah.
Or you do whatever you want, but that's always a recommendation.
With eight, four, I would just like to see the school committee, and I don't know if it's here, I would imagine it would be here in the budgetary, and I don't know if we would do it with an ordinance, but that, I think that the school committee needs to have a reserve, an emergency reserve, and I think that the fund balance, uh, should be different, should actually be more, but, uh, I would like to see that changed, so I'm trying to figure out.
Let's look at some of this, right, because we've talked about this in last budget cycles. Before we make a motion, you know, again, kind of, what are those around? We currently have a citywide reserve that is by memorandum, because of an ordinance, I'm going to get, I might get this wrong, it's 10% of our combined school and municipal budget, correct? Or is it 12? It has to be, our achievable, our aspiration is, I think, believe, 12% of the total city and school.
I'd have to look at the exact language. This is, this.
11% is the guide.
This is a.
Aspirational, yeah. But it is combined. Yeah, nine or 10%. We are healthy, our auditors in the last audit report said we're, we're running strong, but that, I think the key to, whether it be nine, or we're at nine, and if aspirational's 12, or should be 10, we're going to cover that in a second, but the point is, right now, that it says, that is a percentage of the total municipal and school budget. So, to your point, we already have their emergency reserves covered in the general obligation, though it is controlled by the city and not the school. In theory, you all still carry that fund balance, right? And then the city, and, excuse me, the superintendent historically could just use the fund balance at his or his discretion.
What we've done for the last 10 years.
And answer this, does the school committee actually, does this come forth in an order, and the school committee approve the appropriation of that fund balance somehow, other than what it was intended, or is that the sole discretion of the superintendent?
It's, it's spent in the budget.
It's spent in the budget, so the budget is approved, but they're using that fund balance as a source of revenue.
And, and to give an example of what we did this year, don't, you know, we, we, utilize the fund balance, but then we had money coming back in that we had said, oh, well, we'll make it back up to what it was going to be. I think that there needs to be, the fund balance has to be there, and as well as the emergency, although you're saying that we already have the emergency that's included for that, but I don't think that we should be using the fund balance every year as part of the budget, because that's money that's saved from other programs, and eventually, if things don't change, that'll be gone. It'll be, it will be zero, which was what we were afraid of this year.
We are scheduling, um, meetings in January to review ordinance, and in ordinance, it does state that, I believe it states that, uh, the language is that, um, the council had to create a policy, and then that policy was adopted. So that language of 13%, whatever it was, is actually.
It's ordinance.
Policy based off from the ordinance that required you to adopt it. Uh, the 9% is, is that it's pertaining to bonding, so if it's a bond greater, if the amount is greater than 9% for one single project, it has to go to the voters for approval.
Yeah.
So that's a little further on in this process, but I think that what you're looking for would be under ordinance, because that's currently not listed here under charter. So, doesn't mean that it can't be, um, but currently, there's language already built in under that ordinance section that we would then address when we get to ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I think of this, conceptually here, I think that if you wanted to do a motion and put this on, not necessarily the slate, but definitely the follow-up, because it is redundant, to your point. We have, we're carrying, the city's carrying a interest gaining emergency reserve that takes into consideration, um, the school and municipal side, and we set that ordinance, or set that number, whether it be 10, 11, 12, 13% of the total budget, that's what we set. By the school having this fund balance, they are actually having a secondary account. Um, there's a lot of negatives that can be associated with that, because you can now say that I need a million dollars for playground equipment, spend $100,000 on playground equipment, and take $900,000, and then turn that around for buses, whatever, the case may be.
Well, and that's, and that's what we've seen in the past.
So you could treat the, uh, the school budget the same as you would the municipal budget. For example, if there is, uh, they put a, they have their budget $100,000 for a plow truck, the plow truck comes in at $90,000, the $10,000 goes into the fund balance, i.e., it's the emergency reserve fund. We could then apply that same accounting or policy to the school department, saying whatever is, whatever unspent funds go directly to the fund balance slash, which is the same as the emergency reserve, uh, fund. So that's a way for us to get quicker to that achievable and goal of, I can't remember, 12 or 13%. I think we're at actual, I think the reality, I think we're actually at 9% right now. That's where we keep moving up from like six, we keep getting better and better, but we're still not quite there yet. Um, that way, the school bu, committee or budget actually will be a more accurate budget annually than it currently is, because they're probably going to end up budgeting for a 3% to 5% overage, knowing that, you know, there is no financial gain for the superintendent of the school budget, I should say, um, by overestimating, because it's always catching, kind of like catching your tail, every budget cycle.
Can't reuse that money that they save, it must go to the fund balance.
How's that stop us, I mean, I guess my.
You eliminate the fund balance, well, the school not carry its own fund balance to be used as it wants. That school's fund balance will flow into the city's fund balance. If there is emergency that the school needs to cover or needs additional money, appropriations are clear.
Council.
Emergency appropriations come to the city council.
And that can be done under the ordinance.
Sorry, no, the, um, so you have language here regarding emergency appropriation. We just shifted to a, a different topic, and so if you're talking about fund balance, um, then you really should take a look at that under ordinance where it currently exists. If you're talking about emergency appropriations, there'd be a sectioning that's already in the charter that references emergency appropriations that you could.
Well, the emergency appropriations, emergency balances under us, there's nothing specific insofar as the school, so.
Absolutely.
It falls to us.
Yes.
And then if we, the, the ordinance would cover the fund balance and the fact that the fund balance, uh, rotates back to the city, then we can do that under the ordinance, and I would suggest that we.
Do it under ordinance. And when I say, I think we sometimes confuse the term emergency with what's charter definition and what we might, or at least I feel emergency is, and I'm thinking, in, in the charter, we're, we'll talk over it, an emergency is, a flood wipes out half of downtown Auburn, and we have to have an emergency, um, take out an emergency loan equal to X% of our total budget and so forth. That's an emergency, bona fide emergency. I'm talking where they're short because the contract for special edge just jumped $300,000 or $400,000, bad example, too, too close, too soon. Um, that, so, and then they need to, whereas right now, they would just take it out of their internal fund balance and cover that and float it, they would have to come to the council for that appropriation approval.
Run it that way.
Right. Tighter financial control, unified fund balance, more accurate budgeting, more accurate, and going forward, and it would be more transparent to the public, no more hiding school buses.
You need an ord, uh, a, a motion for that?
When we look at, when we look at the ordinance in January?
I think that's probably the best time to do it.
Yeah, I, I don't think it would be within.
So, yeah, we'll bring that up. I mean, I don't think we need a motion at this time, and I, we won't forget this, this will be part of it, for sure, so.
I won't forget.
What other points you have, Brian?
No, that was it. That was the two biggest ones.
Nice.
But honestly, I think that's a great one. A little bit maybe too early, but I'm glad you asked, glad you brought it up, that's great.
That last one is a good one, that.
Eight point five, city council action on the budget. A is regarding your notice and your hearings. B is regarding any amendments before adoption, your process to make changes after the public hearing.
We on C?
C is your adoption.
I've got a question on that. Um, if we fail to vote on, if, if the budget does not pass, it falls back to the city manager's budget.
Correct.
So, if a city manager says, I want to raise the budget by 3%,
That's what was presented.
And the city council says, we all, we're, we want to have zero, zero increase, and we fail to pass that budget, it goes to the 3% increase. As an example, it goes to the city manager's budget. Would we, wouldn't that make more sense so that it would go to the previous year's budget to prevent? Because let's say, for an exaggeration, let's say you want to raise it 5%, and we won't vote for it, and we vote against it, it doesn't pass, it goes back to your 5% budget?
The, the language is there to really force the hand of the council to come to some decision, or if the majority of the council, if that continues to fail, then it would just revert back, that chose not to vote in favor of whatever's being presented, would go back to the council, the, the manager's budget. But I don't know as if, um, I don't know as if you'd want it to go back to the previous year, only because you have, you may have things within this fiscal year that have nothing to do with the previous year, um, and that would be challenged, which is why we had the option last year, under the state, the governor's executive order, to not even have a budget process, but to just adopt the previous year's budget. Um, and I believe you'll find that the majority of municipalities and towns chose not to do that, a couple did, I believe, because they were having struggles being able to hold, those towns that required a, a town meeting to adopt their budget had to, because they just couldn't bring people together. Uh, but the majority didn't do that, even though it would have been easy, uh, because a previous year's budget may not address certain deeds within that upcoming.
Understood. My concern is not so much that, it's the power that lays in the city manager's authority there, that it's almost as if they have, you could, you could conceivably put a budget in that the city council doesn't approve of.
The only way you don't approve of it.
I do that, or the city managers in the past have done that every year.
Yeah.
And.
That was this last res, I think that was the, that went into this, this one went into the charter in the last charter review, didn't it? Did that piece?
Oh, in '05?
That it returned back?
No, I don't think so. I, I'd have to go back and look, but I, I think that language has been in there as long as I can remember as a department director, which is going back at least.
And the, the other.
This long, so.
The other, the other part of it is, uh, the manager also has to respect that if all seven of us said, we're unhappy with your budget, he's going to either say, we can change this so we're all happy, or the, or in just a few months, he could be looking for a new job. Because you, you, you have that right, because he's not following the management of the So he's not going to, he's not going to play that game.
Oh, and, I mean, we'll say that in budgets, and we're speaking openly here. Uh, historically, we've all seen games played by city administration or department heads or so forth, and this is not a negative, because you haven't presented a budget yet, so you're in the clear. You either. No, it's never personal anyways, but, um, where there's games being played. I mean, for example, I think the, the most ludicrous game that's played, um, is what the departments requested versus what the city manager, you know, has actually authorized us to come through. Um, you're not negotiating against your own internal departments, you know, team is team, it's what the manager proposes after consult with city departments. You know, that right there is a game, if you would, okay? But Leroy's right, you know, you have to take a consensus, um, even if it's quite unofficial, on what people are kind of thinking of, and if there's something that's near and dear to the manager's heart and there's justification, he's going to defend it, and he's, he's going to debate it, and he's going to defend it openly, and we're going to end up voting on it. So, yeah, I don't think, has there ever been historically a time where the council cannot agree on a budget and a manager is forced through his own budget because of lack of time, the clock ran out?
Came close.
We came awful close a couple times.
Close, but you didn't do it, right?
Uh, I wanted to, but they chickened out.
Oh, you wanted to revert to the city managers?
I wanted to push it all the way to the limit.
Interesting tactic, to push it, to want to push it to the manager's budget versus what's proposed. It can go both ways. But it's, I mean, a good conversation to have on it. I mean, do you want, do you fully, you want to do a motion, you want to wait? Thinking about it?
Wanted to bring that up to get, uh, feedback from, from folks. I'm going to give it some thought. I could still.
Of course.
Put a motion at the next meeting.
Of course.
To, to address that, after, I wanted to put that on the table and get feedback, because I, I see a potential, and if it's almost happened, uh, certainly not Mr. Manager today, but a rogue, someone that was out of control, you could really cause some problems if someone chose to do that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, wouldn't that come back to us, though? He puts in a budget that's a billion dollars, four of us decide that that's not flying.
Hey, hey, you can hear that.
We, we vote it down, we, we make the amendments, we have a majority of what the budget we're putting through, it doesn't revert back to his. Is that the process, or would be the process?
As long as you had, uh, majority that.
Right.
Proposed to change.
Change five. Five, yes, sorry. But that's what I'm saying, we would all have to not agree with it and not pass anything for it to revert back to his budget.
Okay, because any amendment would change his budget.
Which, right, we would be changing it on our end, so it wouldn't revert back to Which, right, we would be changing it on our end, so it wouldn't revert back to him unless we all got into it and decided we couldn't do it.
And amendments are four votes.
Right.
Amendments to the budgets, four, versus pass the budgets, five.
Oh, right, okay.
Okay.
So there is, you do make changes.
Yeah, okay.
You make a lot of changes in most cases.
Most cases.
All right, eight point six, the appropriation revenue resolve. This is before the end of the year, you would make that appropriation. Eight point seven, your amendments after adoption, this is as it pertains to either supplemental appropriations, and we've done this, you had that.
School department, education.
A couple years ago. Within the school department, you made it clear how those supplemental funds would be brought in. Emergency appropriations, reduction of appropriation, transfer, transfer as it pertains to going from one department to another, not necessarily within that department, that happens on a regular basis, but from one department to another, it would require the city manager coming before the council.
That one is a, that one's a tough one, though, because we've seen it done in the past, and we've had to argue over it a few times.
Is there, is there a limit on the, is there a dollar figure that goes against that, or is there just at your discretion?
Any, any movement from department to department would require a council approval. Changes within the department can be just done by the, by the city manager.
Okay.
Limitation effective dates, this is, this pertains to if something's reduced or transferred. Section eight point eight is the administration, the fiduciary oversight of the budget.
Yeah, I'm going to just jump in here on this one, we're talking about submission, and then obviously going into contents. I, I do have some overarching problems, I'm not sure if it's shared by the council, with the CIP program. It seems that that is where we spend the vast majority of our time as a council, is debating the pros and cons of the merits of each individual line item expenditure, from a lawnmower to, I don't know, police cruisers, okay, and everything in between and sideways. We also end up debating that, not just for city purchases, but also school purchases as well. I do, and then the five-year program, I think this council and the council before has kind of looked at the five-year program well. For example, one quasi municipal agency had additional monies left over and budget wanted to appropriate it for a different piece of equipment, which would normally be under your, be under CIP. We researched back and are like, it's not in your CIP for five years out, so why do you need it now? And we voted it down. I think that was smart. So a lot of this has to do with, I think, our compliance and city's compliance with CIP, also the requirement of sending the CIP out to planning board for review prior to gets, getting to us, doesn't really happen often, and if it does, is it really to the, is it meeting the intent of that? So I just, I want to say that before we start getting into CIP. I'm not sure what the answers are here, but I think the process itself could, could be fine tuned, and I think it deserves some thought process on this. And again, from city staff, too, I mean, if there's any thought process, I know it's cumbersome, you know, and I know it's not normally held, I mean, it can be, we vote on a five-year CIP, I think we have to by federal statutes, or at least HUD, but, you know, it doesn't make sense. Is there any tweaks?
Tell me what you, what doesn't make sense about, well, I find it cumbersome, so I'll just say that, but tell me what you're saying, what doesn't make sense in terms of procedure, how would you, how would you change it?
I don't like, you know, how we treat the school board on the CIP, for example. You know, what we do is we can't tell the school committee what they can and cannot spend their money on within the CIP, you can only give them a top level, right? And the city manager, I've seen happen, not this one, again, before, will just say, ah, they're asking for 2.5, they get a million. Normally, one would expect outrage and pickets and, oh my God, and we don't get that. But then, I think they use the fund balance in order to supplement the CIP. So this might be cause and effect, as we're talking about it, a little cause and effect, they don't really, CIP, the CIP process, they're not using it as intended or designed by charter, because they have another source of funds that they can use.
Also, some of the CIP items you think they're going to get in this year's budget, they're not get, I mean, it's there, but they don't buy it and get it and have it in hand until the next year.
Or the year after, or maybe not, yeah, we've seen that.
For no, I mean, you think like when they asked to fix one of the schools, put a new addition, they hadn't finished off, I think it was.
Park Avenue.
Park Avenue, and they had like an attic they wanted to do in another part, and we gave them the money because they said they had all this school kid enrollment, they didn't do it, they came back again another, what was it, three or four years later, and they were, wanted to do the same project. They are not.
There's no verification process for the, that we're getting what we're, what is being asked for. If you ask for, if you ask for two trucks and it's $100,000, $50,000 each, you give them $100,000, and they get the trucks for $40,000 each.
I did an exercise two years ago on this, and thanks for reminding me. I asked the finance director, then finance director, finance director for the school department and city manager at the time, for actuals, what the actual expenditures were on CIP payments, or excuse me, CIP authorized expenditures. I got from the city, it was $50,000 for a fire truck, true cost of $48,772.95. Okay, the bad delta goes into the fund balance. It's fine, perfect to the penny. The school said $50,000 for a dump truck. What was the actual? $50,000. Well, it's impossible, and it was everything, everything was to the penny, actuals versus authorized. So I do think, again, we're looking at CIP, what we don't have in any of this maybe is, what's the review of the previous year? Do we have a committee? Does this go to audit committee, not the entire city council and/or school committee, where the audit committee actually reviews the previous years for efficacy, to see if they're following good prac, good financial practices, with regards, not to what the accountants can say, because we've asked this before, and everybody's like, oh, the accountants and the auditors say everything's fine, but they're not looking at policy and intent versus execution. So is there something, should this be in the charter, under contents, should it be in an ordinance? It's clunky, it's not followed, maybe if it was followed, maybe if we addressed the fund balance issue, we'd all feel better about this process, that, I don't know.
Excuse me, if you look at the way the, the federal government has allocated the money for the, the CRF, you can spend the money, we want to see it. It's not, well, yeah, we'll buy it, don't worry, we'll buy it, no, we want to see it. Where is it? So that might be a way of, you know, if you're going to do something, let's see it, we want to see where it's at.
We can, we can talk to the finance director, I think that when you look at CIP, it's not the same process as their budget, you have full authority, you're the ones that are determining what projects will be funded and which ones will not be funded. Typically, though, what has happened in the past, it's been, you have school, you have a million dollars, school committee, you determine what your priorities are for that million dollars out of the bond. So you, you, council in the past have given their authority to the school committee to determine those, those projects. You don't have to relinquish that authority, you could keep it as a council and say, this is what we, usually they come back with their list, and then when you approve it, the capital, it includes those items. So you're not just giving them a blank check, it's actually designated as those items within the, the capital budget. But we can talk to finance about that process on the other end.
Right, the follow-up.
The follow-up. You know, I'll have a capital update for you soon, so you'll know where we are with the capital projects that you had included. You could request the same thing from the superintendent to provide you an update on the capital expenditures that you approved. So that's all within your scope and authority, you don't give that up like you, you had mentioned, I think, regarding, you know, the school budget, yes, you can't tell them which area you're going to make cuts on. CIP, though, you have that full authority, you can do that.
I would, I would like to see that, that we get the expenditure and the actual, and I don't want, and I don't want to, I don't want to see somebody say, you know, we asked $50,000, we spent $50,000. No, I want to see, I want to see the invoice for what you bought, so that we.
So I, I can check with finance, I mean, Joe, I'm sure Joe will be able to provide us the actual financial report, because that, all bonding comes back through Joe, so, and so we can provide that, and we can make that, make that available for you. Because it's a bond, it does, only because I just heard what you were just saying, because it's a bond, it does go into a, the undesignated bond amount, and then, in the next budget year, when you look to approve certain capital projects, recommendations are made that this capital would be spent on that undesignated bond amount, because you've already bonded it, you've gone out to bond before you actually make the purchase, so that's how.
But that only.
That would come in, and then you would have to vote on whether or not you want to use those undesignated bond amounts, not to go to your general fund, but to future capital projects, because those are being bonded and you're paying, you're paying debt service on that.
We need to, we need to check on that, that absolutely happens on the municipal side? Yes.
That, that's a piece we'll have to check with finance.
It's the school side, yeah, or how, because, I mean, the city, yeah, I think that's it's all worthy.
Joe will have that.
I think that you'll, you'll answer a lot of the problem with the school, saying if it runs into one fund balance, a fund, not, not their fund balance, but a fund balance.
And a bond balance, if you were to.
And a bond balance, so if you said.
You might find with the example that you used of the 50,000, what you might find is that the amount of the project and, or the purchase end up being, say, 60,000, 50,000 came under capital, 10,000 came under potentially a fund balance or a federal program grant money.
Best of 50,000.
So the 50,000 plus the additional probably came out.
I don't mean to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
But I, I don't know about anybody else, but from my standpoint, if, if I ask for 50,000 for a truck and it comes back in at $75,000, I want them to come back to the council and say, well, it came back in too high, you guys are going to approve this amount of money, rather than just be able to go to the fund balance and go, hey, you know, we're just going to take, you know, $25,000 out of it.
They're scared, no.
Depends on how you appropriated it, because you appropriated the 50,000 for that purchase, but if they had a federal grant that might be offsetting that, that, that could potentially happen as well, so.
But the end result is, I want, I want it to come back to the council for us to be able to say, oh, okay, well, that's okay.
Well, again, then the council would probably say, at least one person, I'm sure, would say, you came to us with a $50,000 estimate for a piece of equipment that's at $75,000, what's wrong with your procurement process at this point? That is something else, too. So in other words, in order to avoid that unpleasant conversation, they might just be, again, out of practice, grabbing it from another account.
But if you think about your capital as we present it currently, as you look across, there are three funding categories for capital expenditures, so you might see a capital bond for $100,000 for, for an item, and then there's 20,000 that's coming out of another account, 20,000, so what you should do is if, you should ask the count, the school to provide the full amount, and they may do this, it's, I'm not, I have not been part of this yet, so we'd have to look into it, but to just ensure that they're providing what all those special accounts might be funding that one capital project.
Thing costs 75.
Correct.
We need 50 from you, because we're using 25 from this.
And they might do that.
Adam, Adam is very sharp, so I have no, no prob, no qualms with the fact that he could do whatever we ask him to do.
Let's, I, I want, there's, this is just one, I think, layer of the whole capital or CIP program, and we put this on a, kind of, the parking lot area, and come back and spend some more time on this during our next meeting, because now we still have to look at the municipal side, i.e. getting out to planning board, I believe that was chartered, that this needs to be run through the planning board for you, before it gets to us.
It's by ordinance.
It's by ordinance, okay, very good, yeah, I'm not seeing it, so it might be by ordinance.
We have that, we're, we're working on getting that scheduled now, actually, so.
Yes, so.
So they'll have, the planning board will have participation in the development of the capital budget before, I think Council Carrier and Boss were on this before, and I think you got the capital, if you got it, was after it even gone before the council, so, so Eric is scheduling that now, so once we, we're teeing that up for, I think, January, so. But it's by ordinance.
Okay, and we have, just so we all know, it's about 7:22. We initially thought about stopping at 7:30, is everybody still good with that, or do we want to go till 7:45 or 8? This gets a little bit draining when you go through it line by line. 7:30? You want to do 7:30 and continue it? Again, doing it to standard versus time? Yeah, yeah? Head nodding, okay, so let's, take, handle another section, I suppose, Phil.
All right, so I believe we, I didn't hear anything on eight point eight, eight point nine was a capital, which we just discussed, eight point 10 would be the action on the capital program, and this just outlines the time, where the hearing will be, the process, that it's a joint public hearing with school. Section B would be the adoption, either with or without amendment, the public hearing on the last day of the month of the current fiscal year. Eight point 11 is the independent audit, the council shall provide for the independent annual audit of the city, the standards of which that must meet. You have an audit committee that consists of two councils and two school committee members.
Let me add on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just, so just to remind everybody, we did discuss the audit committee during the mayor's ad hoc, and we did make the provisions to maintain two city councillors and two school committee members, and then they will choose a fifth member to serve as well jointly, so that hasn't changed, that's still there. Again, that could change if you decide to change the section, so.
Yep, great point. Eight point 12 is your emergency reserve fund.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to talk about that, just for section, specifically eight point 12, section B, so we have the, again, this is.
I'm sorry, eight point 12 has no A or B, you mean second paragraph?
No, section eight point 12.
Eight point 13?
Packet that you sent out, it did.
Hmm?
Packet that was sent out, you have an A and a B.
Yeah.
Not in mine.
Not in mine.
Not in mine.
Really? You're on the hard copy, huh?
Point 12, emergency reserve fund has two paragraphs, no A or B.
Okay, online version, I'm on, I'm online, I pulled it from the agenda online, I have a section A and a section B, they're in parentheses.
As a paragraph?
Yep, yep, I think.
So, yeah, what you have online is the MUNICODE.
Oh.
Section, so the MUNICODE probably broke it into two bullets.
Okay, yeah, because they do look a little bit different, they're not like subs, traditional subsections.
My guess is it's going to be the same language, so.
Oh, well, it's the emergency reserve fund shall be annually funded in an amount equal to at least one half of 1% of the total amount to be appropriated for all purposes of the current fiscal year.
Same language.
Okay, and this, again, this might be going into ordinance versus charter, so we have the, obviously the fund balance, and then we have the emergency reserve fund. It's almost a little bit, at this point, it's, we're duplicating funds, so every year, what historically has happened, except for this last year due to the pandemic, we changed it, we have the emergency reserve fund, which is always funded at around half of percent of the, of the total budget, that's school and city, so last year was like 450 or 510,000, okay, roughly right around there, 450, 475, okay? If we don't spend that emergency reserve fund this year, up into the fund balance it goes, to prop up more of the fund balance. What we did this year during the pandemic, though, is we did an emergency appropriation as a council, to carry that emergency reserve from fiscal year 1920 to fiscal year 20 and 21, in addition to the emergency reserve that we currently have for a bulked up emergency reserve. If we don't use it this year, that emergency reserve goes into the fund balance. So what I, I, we've created layers, and I think this is where we get a little bit redundant. If we have to, through ordinance, maintain a fund balance of a certain percentage, and once we achieve that percentage as dictated by policy, can we stop setting aside more? Does that make sense? Because we're constantly, so everything that is extra or left over from this budget a year goes into the fund balance. The fund balance is our emergency reserve, I don't see why we need a second emergency reserve, getting money out of it is the same mechanism appropriation as getting it out of the fund balance if it needed. Makes sense? It's almost like we have two piggy banks here, and then one's a preliminary piggy bank, and the other piggy bank.
But is the process for withdrawing funds from each of those different? We changed, yeah, so we changed it this year so that we could spend that money instead of it automatically going in.
Well, keeping, keeping it as an emergency reserve, because it would just automatically go into the fund balance if it's not spent, like all other appropriations.
Is there a policy or a, if, once we achieve the 12%, if we were to continue to take that half a percent, that, once we get past that, it could be, like, is there a policy that goes to tax relief?
It goes to tax relief, you're not funding it at the full amount, so it automatically goes to tax relief, because every year, there's money that's allocated under, out from the fund balance into, as revenue, that offsets taxpayers' dollars, so part of that is to keep the mill rate where it is, so that, that currently happens through, through the process, so what the mayor's saying is that automatically, he's correct, it dumps into So what the mayor is saying is that automatically, he's correct, it dumps into fund balance, but then it usually comes back through under fund balance that comes back. So it's, it's happening, it's just you have the authority to determine what that amount is through the budget process.
And this is the same thing the school committee does, except smaller numbers. School committee might use ten percent of its budget, comes from their current, the city, the school committee's fund balance. We do it too, it's just a lower level. So we're doing the same thing the school committee is doing, that we just earlier said is probably not good practice. We take extra money from the fund balance and saying it's for taxpayer relief when it originated from taxpayers to begin with in a previous year. And then applying it to the future budget and giving us a sense of taxpayer relief, even though we're constantly replenishing that amount of money we're spending through the emergency reserve. And in some years, we spend more than what we have replenished with the emergency reserve out of the fund balance for quote unquote taxpayer relief. I'm not sure if that is the intent of the charter. I don't think, I think in a budget process, year to year, and I think words are important here, you budget for what you need as close to possible, and you tax appropriately. Because if you don't do that, and you use preceding tax dollars from a preceding year to supplement your, you know, your then-current, your now-current, your budget, that becomes credit cards paying credit cards, sort of, right? Analogies, maybe? It's becomes unsustainable at a certain point. I don't think it is here with the municipality yet, but it will be, and it could be in the future. And part of this charter isn't about what is happening today with us in this room, but of what could happen and what we want to set forth for the next fifteen years. So that's why, this is where we built in, in this charter, again, not, I don't think they're intent, supplemental funding for our budget, that then the city manager and the staff can then use that in order to give you a false sense of the true mill rate. That snapshot, is that, yeah.
I think we have to be careful, because if we didn't have this emergency fund reserve a few years back, we would have been in some serious trouble. When mistakes are made, and, you know, it, maybe it shouldn't have happened, but it did happen for over a million dollars. And when you get into that kind of deficit, we have to have some money somewheres, other than the fund balance.
Well, how about this? How about if I make a proposal, maybe that someone might want to make a mention? It's a simple way of changing the language. The emergency reserve fund shall be annually funded in an amount equal to at least one-half of one percent of the total amount to be appropriated for all purposes of the current fiscal year. So you can add on in the charter that the emergency reserve shall be maintained annually to equal half of a percent. So if you'd maintain it, so like this year, let's say the budget was eighty million dollars, half of one percent is four hundred thousand dollars. Next year it goes up to ninety million. Well, that emergency reserve doesn't go into the fund balance, that emergency reserve stays there, but is then augmented to equal a half of one percent. Right? So the appropriation line item, because if every year, if you look back at our budgets, we have a line item for the emergency reserve equal to half of one percent of the total budget. Now what it would be, would be the delta between what is needed in order to keep it, maintenance at half of one percent. I think that's a way of keeping it there and keeping that money gaining interest and maintaining that. Because it is going to gain some annual interest, very.
So we might have to just, which we'll do with all these, either through legal or through finance, to just confirm that this is not indirect, you know, opposition of a general accounting practice procedure.
Of course, of course.
So as long as it meets GAAP, then, then we could certainly take a look at it. I mean, and it's happening now, but you're right, you're seeing that full amount.
Yeah.
The way that it, so I'm just clear, and the way that it works is at the end of that year, that four fifty or the four hundred goes into the fund balance.
Today.
Right.
Yes.
And the goal being.
It's right back out in the next budget to bring it back up to this amount, plus the delta that the mayor was talking about.
Right, so we, the goal would be not to be able to take that out to balance the budget.
Emergency reverse, yeah, I'm sorry. The emergency reserve doesn't do that. The emergen, the manager's budget always has to have that amount in. So if you were to do a comparison from the year to year, it's only the delta that the mayor was referring to as where that goes up, or down, depending on how the budget's approved. So the emergency reserve really doesn't, that's not what's balancing the budget. What's balancing the budget many times is that money that's brought in under the fund balance as a revenue.
Taxpayer money that comes in.
Yeah.
Taxpayer money that comes in and just.
Should never get used.
Well, you're, you, if it sits there, then you're going to tax the, the citizens again for money that you've already taxed them.
But conceivably, if you didn't use that, eventually we get to twelve percent. And then you could conceivably not have to collect that money anymore.
You take that delta again. So let's say we're at, we've achieved twelve percent, whatever the memorandum is, or if we modify it, which we can, mod to whatever level it is, we could go over that in January too. But then any, so we, we have that sitting in the bank. We're maintaining a healthy half a percent for emergency reserves here by adding another twenty or thirty thousand a year. So it equals a half of one percent. In that budget, after we're here, maxed, we'll have leftover money in that budget that we don't expend, okay? It happens in a hundred different categories. That money can auto, and we can write this into the ordinance governing the, the, the fund balance, all money after we hit our achievable goal goes right into the following year's budget, the same as it is now. But it gives them a set parameter. Whereas you just can't take five or six hundred thousand out, you only can take what's, what is over.
The extra.
The ex, thank you. Okay? So that.
So I, I think what you're getting at is more of a policy decision by the council, not necessarily charter at this point. Emergency reserve is set. I understand the maintain, we just have to determine whether or not that meets the general practice, and I think that could go either way. But as you're getting into the general fund, getting to the twelve percent, you could create a policy that says, we as a city will get to twelve percent by X year by doing XYZ. You could make that, and, and you really have that, you have that ability now, just by, when you, when you approve the budget. It's whether or not you want to make those decisions, so. But you could definitely move in that direction. But I will, I will just ask, this is just more of a clarification.
I'd like to, at least, if, if anybody wants to make a motion, at least to put this on the, on the list of further staff actions, so we don't lose it, memorialize that. Okay? Just because we've did it with everything else too.
Before, before we make that motion, do we also want to add, in addition to being in alignment with GAAP, that we also assess the impact that any changes might make with standards and poor and Moody, because.
Yes, yes. Because that actually is, has been, that has been done already. If you all remember the last audit report last year, I asked that question, how do we compare? And they're like, yeah, you guys are great, above most and below hardly any. So we asked a question about, and that has to be asked to an independent auditing board, not internally. You'll get a different answer if we ask it internally. So, yes, if we could, so if someone wants to make that motion?
I'll second it. He made the motion.
Mm-hmm, I made the motion. Okay, second by Council Gary, all those in favor? Or debate, I'm sorry?
Is there, quick debate, is there a reason why we are at one-half of one percent? Is that a, an arbitrary number?
I'm assuming it's a standard.
Okay.
And again, I think we're bringing two different pieces of the conversation in, just for clarification. Right now, this direction is regarding emergency reserve fund. And then now we're also talking about fund balance and getting that twelve percent.
I think sometimes we have to, you're right, you're absolutely right, we're bringing in two parts of the conversation. But one thing about the charter, it goes to the people for a vote, a popular, a popular vote. And, and that's what it is. And I want to, if, if there's some way of looking at everything holistically, if there's something we can do inside the charter that makes it stick for fifteen years for the betterment of the city and the future councillors and city managers, I think it should be here as well. Even if it's just a slight change of maintain versus, you know, equal to, from a definition standpoint. If you all agree. Any other debate on that? Comment? No? Okay, all those in favor?
You're definitely going to have a finance director make some kind of statement on this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, we've had it before.
She's probably watching.
She loves you.
We love you, Joe. I know you don't like it when I talk about this.
So this is a good place to stop?
I think it is. You guys think it's a good place to stop?
Yeah, and I think we're, other than the, getting to the bond and stuff, the.
Great accomplishment.
Yeah, okay. But everybody, before we sign off and I call this meeting an adjournment, everybody feels good about the process? Is there any changes that you want to see made to the process as we continue?
You, you did say that this will, when, when it's over with, it's going to go to the public for vote.
Yes, it has to. It has to. Okay, regardless of, well, we obviously, it has to pass out of this body before it can go to the public, so.
I'd still like to make a comment on the, the two-year, one-year, three-year, whatever it may be. I really think that type of moving around causes problems with councillors. Coming in brand new, every year, there's a new councillor coming in to learn the system. Like Lasagna, she's been with us now, going on four years, and still has questions on a lot of things, saying, I was never shown that, I never knew that, no one ever told me that. A person coming in and going through this every year has got to be trained, retrained, trained another one, this one goes, they're fed up with it. I, I think it's really a disservice to the councillors. There's more value to three being learned and the same thing at the same time, or two, versus one every year for an election and teaching them.
Small groups make, there's some value in having three or four people be brought on board and, and orientated. Right? That's what you're saying, I just want, okay.
But I think it also is incumbent that there be really good training. Which hasn't really happened yet.
I think one of the.
Out of a lot of training, a lot of it.
I think some of the reasons to not to belabor it too, was that historically with other councils, we've seen any, not this council yet, of course, that come August, decisions are like, oh, we can't make any decisions because we have an election in four months. And then it becomes, instead of a twenty-four month term, it really becomes like a twenty-one or a twenty-month term. And is that actually fair to the residents? At least this way, if, if half of them aren't up for reelection, business will still progress. So.
You've got to remember as a councillor and you want something done in your ward, it doesn't get done in two years. It doesn't get done many times in four years. For instance, the anniversary park took me, all of the ten years that I've been serving in this city, and I worked here years before that, that we worked on, how are we going to put this plan together and moving forward? We were in private meetings for two years before the city even saw exactly the plan. So the four-year, six-year, eight-year, whatever your terms come up to, again, I think hurts people in certain wards that want to see things done.
Very good, lots to talk about, nothing else at this point. We'll save it for our next meeting. We have a regularly scheduled council meeting. Just so everybody knows, it will, are we good on decision on council chambers? It will be in council chambers. We will be having public participation remotely, so we can save public works, labor and time, because we'll have voting day the next day. Okay, so it is going to be a light agenda.
So we'll be in public, we'll be in chambers on Monday night.
Public will zoom in for public comment.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Oh, no, we'll keep it, we'll keep it on both.
Oh, we're going to keep it on both? We're good there?
Yeah.
Okay, it is a light schedule though, because we do have to be considerate of public works, it has to come in afterwards and get everything reset up for election day.
So let's be thoughtful about that, and really move through it.
Let me confirm that. Well, what we'll do is we'll make sure when the meeting is posted on Thursday, it will have for the public exactly how to participate. But let me just work that through with IT a little bit.
Fair enough, but we will be considerate.
I think it's a council to be cognizant of that, because it's a lot of work.
We did a preliminary look through the schedule with that cognizance in mind, yeah, just to make sure that we can be out of here at a reasonable time. Okay? Okay, guys, I'd like to take a, make a motion, or no, I'd like to receive a motion, excuse me.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion for Council Walker, second for Council Milks. All those in favor, by voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good night.
Good night.